And welcome to the February 25th meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Would everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening, and we certainly apologize for the lateness of our start of the meeting this evening. I'd like to make notice that the full board, everyone you see up here, including Commissioner Nagel, met in executive session immediately preceding this meeting to speak of matters of personnel, real estate, and legal. And I'd also like to wish Commissioner Nagel a very happy birthday. It is his birthday today, so happy birthday, Commissioner Nagel. Consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to remove? I first like to, oh, well, go ahead. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove from the consent agenda?
I do.
I don't have time to talk into the mic.
Sorry, can I just, is that the agenda? Can I just see that?
You want to remove something, but you don't have an agenda?
Yeah, I would, actually. So the minutes from last month or last meeting?
Okay, just tell me what you want to remove.
Oh. The minutes.
Okay, so D, item D.
No. Yeah.
Yes, item D. Anything else anyone'd like to remove? Is there anything staff would like to remove? Are we removing the Staff Traffic Committee minutes?
Yes, that's correct, ma'am.
Yes, okay, so item C. Anything else from the staff? Is there anything the public would like to remove from the agenda or consent agenda?
Could we get Resolution H, item H, removed as well?
Item H, okay. All right, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items C, D, and H, please?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus items C, D, and H, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, item C. Officer Dietrich, did you guys want to, does someone want to speak to that, or are we just removing that?
We gave you incomplete documentation, so we're updated and give it next month, or next meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, very good. So item C, we will not vote on, we'll just remove that entirely. On to item D, the minutes.
So I just, whoever was at Janet to the minutes, when you did the appointments, I think you said Luke was the one that brought them up, when I believe it was Jack, it's something very minor on them?
I think we discussed that, and you've gone back and looked, and it was Luke, right?
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it was Luke.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, we talked about that, because usually it is.
Okay. I read your minutes, Jen.
All right, may I get a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting from January 28, 2019? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting on January 28, 2019, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes seven, nothing. Item H, Commissioner Booker.
I got a call on this this morning, I just wanted to have staff review it for the public, what we're going out for sealed bids on this tree program.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is done annually, and this year the Shade Tree Commission hopes to do it actually in the spring and the fall. So the actual number of trees is yet to be determined, but this is the program where it, we send things out to the residents to let them know that for $35, they can have a tree planted, it has to be in the right of way, it's planted by a professional company, it has a tree bag, the only requirement is they pay the $35, and we'll water the tree. So the Shade Tree Commission works with staff and our arborist to, once people send in their forms that say they want to do this with their check, they go out and actually flag locations for this, then we create a sealed bid package from that, and we go to bid.
Thank you. What's the anticipated, what's the budget for this? Was this the?
There's well over $50,000 between what's in the budget, and we also usually get a donation from Shanticleer, so there's plenty to do this. I have in here 50 to 70 trees, I don't think in the spring they actually want to do that many, but I wanted to give them the ability to do that if they wish.
50 to 70 trees, so the public should get ready if they want to have a tree planted, they have to fill out the form, but
Yes, sir.
we'll have some trees that go out for $35.
Yes, sir.
Anything else on this item? May I get a motion to approve item H, Resolution 2019-12?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving Resolution 2019-12, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. All right, we'll move on to public participation. Invite the public to come up and speak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Becca Zajak, and I'm a sophomore at Radnor High School. I'd like to make a brief statement about why I support the Ready for 100 initiative. All over the world, climate change is wreaking havoc on nature and humanity, and it's rapidly getting worse. If we don't act now, the track that we're on will be irreversible. Today, in our community, we are given a chance to make change for the better. The Ready for 100 initiative builds a path towards healing our environment that future generations can walk on if you vote in favor of them tonight. Our world is in desperate need of direction towards the right path. Let Radnor lead by example by following the path that Ready for 100 will take us. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca, for being here. Next. Hello, ladies.
Hi, I'm Liz Duffy, I live at 547 Hillera Road, St. David's.
I'm Gail Morrison from 111 Poplar Avenue.
Michelle Hunt, 2023.
And Bridgette Durack, 326 St. David's Road.
After the shooting in Parkland last February, a group of concerned citizens got together and formed a group called the Radnor Residents for Gun Safety. We are a nonpartisan group that focuses on gun violence prevention efforts by working with community groups and government officials to raise awareness of gun safety and to advocate for tools and programs that can make our community safer. Our group is comprised of about 15 active members who devote time each week to meetings and advocacy, and importantly, about 100 or more members who receive emails, attend special events, and who follow our Facebook page. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our group to thank Superintendent Chris Flanagan and his department, as well as the Delaware District Attorney's Office for their support in our efforts, in particular, our gun lock and gun turn-in promotion efforts and the Be Smart program. The Radnor Residents for Gun Safety raised $900 in one quick meeting to purchase gun locks, which was then matched by DA Copeland. In all, 1,000 gun locks were purchased and given to the Radnor Police Department to give free to anyone who needs one. Several locks were distributed at the Radnor Police Second Community School Safety and Active Shooter Symposium on November 11. Six guns and 1,000 rounds of ammunition were collected that night. We are now working together with the Radnor Police Department to bring this program to the offices of local pediatricians, as well as enhance communication and promotion to other areas. Two members of our group are trained in the Be Smart program, a program that provides information about the safe storage of guns, as well as education regarding what questions to ask when your children visit other homes for playdates. Superintendent Flanagan has been an active supporter of our efforts to promote the program, allowing a Be Smart table at the police symposium and partnering with our members to explain the program at the Radnor Fall Festival and the Radnor Community Television Channel. In summary, the Radnor Residents of Gun Safeties feel very fortunate to have found a true partner in Superintendent Flanagan and his police department. His leadership is not only appreciated, but has been essential to our success. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, and thank you definitely to our police department for all their efforts. Thank you, ladies. Good evening, Roy.
Hi, I'm Roy Perry, 52 Haymarket Lane. I'm not a frequent visitor to these meetings, but I always start with a thank you to the board. Your job is thankless, except for right now, and I wanted to just say good work. The hundreds of decisions you make that don't become, the subject of online comment streams or newspaper articles are appreciated, all the work that you do. I'm here to talk about the new business item, the plastic bag ordinance. I've recently done some consulting work with an organization that has had a lot of success in this area, including the state of California statewide ban on plastic bags. I'm not here because I think there's anything wrong with plastic. Replacement heart valves and building insulation and body armor for police officers, that's all well and good, but we have a huge problem with single-use plastics in this society, like bags and straws and cups. They're used for an average of 12 minutes, and they stay in the environment as trash for 500 years or more. Fish and water birds eat plastic and die of starvation with full stomachs, and we don't even need these items, there are better alternatives. It's, plastic bags are not the best way to carry home groceries or a tube of toothpaste. In September, Forbes Magazine reported that nearly 350 municipalities across the country have made the choice to regulate, discourage, or even ban single-use plastics, and I really hope Radnor is next, following the example of Narberth this past October, when they became the first community in Pennsylvania to take the action that worked for all of their stakeholders. Nationwide, this is no longer even particularly a progressive idea, it's certainly not anti-business. A restaurant group in Philly made headlines by voluntarily switching to biodegradable takeout packages. And a few weeks ago, I noticed that right here in Wayne, Goat's Beard has paper straws, not plastic ones, out on the counter. They're joining McDonald's, Starbucks, Walmart, and hundreds of other firms committed to eliminating plastic bags, packaging, and straws, not just because it's a good idea, but because their customers expect and basically demand that they act responsibly for the future and for the environment. Kind of like Radnor expects the board to. I hope you will do it soon, and thank you again.
Thank you, Roy. Any additional public comment this evening? Good evening, Roberta.
Good evening. I just want to give a little bit of promotion for our Shedding the Light forum, which is going to be Wednesday night. We hope everyone in the commissioners will attend, as well as planning zoning, people interested in development within Radnor Township. We know that light is frequently a discussion topic among different groups within the township, and we have a stellar panel that'll inform you of the practical, legal, and health-related issues regarding lights in our community. Thank you.
Roberta, is that 7:30 here?
7:30, right here in the Township Building. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other public comment this evening? All right. Moving on, appointments to various boards and commissions. I believe we have one appointment this evening, Commissioner Larkin?
We do, we met this, I guess this afternoon with Gail Morrison? Yeah, afternoon-ish, evening-ish, with Gail Morrison for the RHM Committee. Could I get a motion to appoint Gail Morrison to the RHM Committee?
So moved. Second.
Can you just let everyone know what RHM is first, quickly?
Excellent question.
Radnor Haverford Marple Sewer Authority.
There you go, I could not have given you the initials. They are in charge of the Joint Sewer Authority that we use with a couple of different townships. Having someone on that board is important for us because it enables us to participate in the process of determining whether affluent permits are issued. Did I get that right, or at least in the ballpark?
That's part of it. The other thing that's important is we are 50% of the capacity of RHM, so our voice is very important.
Excellent. With that in mind, since we've already got a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of Gail Morrison being appointed to the RHM Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, thank you. Do you want to announce the boards and commissions?
At the moment, we have, I guess I'm going to say five vacancies on Carfac. We have vacancies on Carfac. We have one vacancy on the Code Appeals Board, which is a five-year term. We have one vacancy, which we've just filled for the Radnor Haverford Marple Sewer Authority, so no vacancies there. We have four vacancies for the Storm Water Management Advisory Committee, one vacancy for the Zoning Hearing Board, and potentially one more. We have one vacancy for the Rental Housing Appeals Board. So we need volunteers from across the community to come out and help us with all of these boards. If you have time, if you have interest, if you have inclination for any of these, please come out and give us a hand, because we need more bodies and we need more minds. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, on to Resolution 2019-08, a vision for a 100% clean renewable energy future. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. So is there, we had a presentation on this the last time, and we have in front of us a resolution. So is there any Commissioner comment on the resolution for a vision for 100% clean renewable energy?
I have a comment if nobody else does. I'd like to make an amendment.
You're going to make an amendment?
I'm opening up the revised version here from this morning. I want to make sure I have the... Nope, so that, this resolution that came this morning was not this one, then, right?
Yeah, no, it was not. That was, that was 2019-13. So we still, it's the same resolution that we had that was in our packet.
All right, one, bear with me here.
Bearing. Well, I'll go ahead and make a comment while you are looking for your, is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay.
So I will just say that I am going to be supporting this initiative this evening. I think we all know that the effect of greenhouse gases and what that is having on our community and our world as a whole, impacting our climate, increasing the sea levels, and decreasing the growth of crops and natural plants. So I, for one, am in favor of working to reduce emissions and mitigate and reduce greenhouse gases, which I think is something that this initiative is working towards. It is a goal, as our friend Sarah has said many times, so I will be voting in favor of this this evening and look forward to working with, hopefully with the township to, towards this goal.
Did I talk long enough? Are you ready, Rich? Or, go ahead, Luke.
I was just going to say that I think everyone needs to do their part to fight climate change, and this is the township's contribution to it, however small it may be, it's something, so. And it's gradual, it's going to take a little time, we're going to spend a little money doing it, but I think it's in the name of sustainability and, you know, saving what we have for our kids and grandkids, so fully support it.
Missionary.
Move, you want to go?
I guess so.
I'd move we strike the first whereas in this Resolution 2019-08.
You want to strike whereas climate change threatens the long-term survival of life on the planet?
Yes, I do.
Are you making a motion that you're seeking a second on?
Obviously.
Okay. Is there a second for Commissioner Booker's amendment to this resolution? Okay, I'm afraid that the motion fails.
Move to strike the second, first and second wheres?
For the sake of time, just lump them all together, Rich.
Multiple, multiple?
Well, these are statements which are, this is a resolution of the township. They're, these issues are really very subjective. The issue is, do we want to have the most efficient, lowest-cost energy for the township? I think we do, but this is a, this is a different thing, this is a mantra. So I'm just offering the chance for the board, if we want to have a clean, efficient energy, and we want to have the lowest cost for the constituents, that's fine, but this is a mantra that climate change is going to destroy the planet, and it's more like a religious statement than it is a factual statement.
You wouldn't call it a scientific statement?
I think that the science, there's a lot of science on these issues. I, if there is some supporting documentation that the planet will be destroyed, the long-term survival of the planet, I haven't seen that. I haven't seen where the long-term survival of life is going to be decimated.
Was there a lot of climate science in law school when you were there?
I'm not talking about law school, I'm talking about this resolution for us. So I'm offering, this board, you want to remove those? Or you want to keep, you want to keep those statements, those statements in there which are, so you don't want to remove those?
So you're seeking a motion to remove the first whereas and the second whereas?
Yes.
Is there a second for Commissioner Booker's motion? Motion fails for lack of second. Anything else, Commissioner Booker?
I do, I have a statement, then. So you want to go, you do yours?
Mine will be very quick. I support this, and anything to help the environment is something that I believe that we, as a board and as a community, should support. And I also think that if we can stop the dependency on foreign oil, that's definitely a good thing for our economy and for our children's future.
Okay, we don't depend on foreign oil. You're a net oil exporter.
I'm going to support this, however, I do have a problem with it that it doesn't include nuclear power, and I spent my career in nuclear power. But this is an argument that I've had with the Sierra Club for years and years and years, and have had open debates with them about, and I believe the rest of the resolution's solid, and I don't think it needs to be stopped for that feeling, that belief of mine, so I am voting for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Nagel. Are you ready with your statement, Commissioner Booker?
I am, I am, I am ready to go. This green dream 100% clean program is merely the latest socialist attempt at massive government intervention and direction in our lives. In short, this is the environmental shakedown. This is justified by the new religion of climate change. Back in 2009, the late Charles Carthomer wrote, "The cultural elites went straight from the memorial service for socialism to the altar of the environment." The objective is the same, highly centralized power. The alleged justification is not abolishing oppression and inequality, but saving the planet. Abolishing oppression and inequality through socialism proved to be unpopular, and the Democrats have now retreated from that meme. Now it's about abolishing oppression and inequality through the new climate change religion. The materials here that were provided make that clear. In one of the statements accompanied the resolution, it says, paragraph two, equitable and just. "A commitment to the equity, affordability, and access for all members of the community of this green energy." This simply, this is simply a socialist redistribution of wealth. First, we increase the cost of energy for everyone with inefficient, high-cost, new alternatives, and then we redistribute wealth from those mean rich people and give it to others so that the new unaffordable energy is within their reach. Then, paragraph 10, it says, "Demonstrate immediate progress. Build, support, or incentivize clean energy projects in your community and prioritize projects that benefit low-income residents and/or communities impacted by fossil fuels." Again, that can mean nothing other than a monetary transfer from wealthy to less wealthy in accordance with this resolution. It's hard to say exactly what it means, but there's no question that it's nothing more than a redistribution of wealth to those who do not have jobs for natural gas pipeline workers, et cetera, or those who can't afford solar panels or geothermal systems. This scheme is nonsensical. Let's put hundreds of thousands of Pennsylvanians out of work at refineries, pipeline companies, gas stations, coal mining, coal mines, nuclear power plants, and then increase the cost of energy to everyone through building windmills, installing solar panels and geothermal systems, and then hand out money to everyone who can no longer afford energy to heat their household. To try to retrofit every government building in the township, every police car, every fire engine, every public works lawn mower and trash truck, every chainsaw, weed walker, weed whacker, every park, stadium, public facility would cost tens of millions of dollars in Radnor. This doesn't even address the cost of the transition to high-speed rail or the elimination of international, of the internal combustion engine that is contemplated by this resolution. And, and what's also contemplated is that this board will contact the Commonwealth to have similar statewide efforts. We know recently this huge California rail project was scrapped after $3 billion of taxpayer dollars were spent last week. We'll see more of this as this resolution is attempted to be implemented, and you'll find out what many of us know now, that this simply will not work, it's not feasible. Trains are 19th century technology, but windmills are 15th century technology. The windmills kill birds, are huge and ungainly additions to the landscape or ocean scape on a massive scale. The power is intermittent and cannot be stored and transmitted efficiently over hundreds of miles. Solar panels do not work well in the northeastern part of the country. In fact, to have meaningful solar panel power, you would need to have solar panels over the entire state of Nevada to supply a meaningful electrical energy to the country. Moreover, crude oil demand continues to increase globally. This year, crude oil is expected to hit 100 million barrels per day and is expected to grow for the next decade. Some forms of transportation, such as airplanes, rely on fossil fuels. Renewable sources simply do not have the energy efficiency to power aircraft, and that is unlikely to change over the next 30 years. I think that people are proposing that we phase out aircraft by 2050 and rely on trains, as, except for perhaps some cultural elites who would maintain that they need to fly when they're private jets. Demand in developing companies for oils has almost doubled over the last two decades in new industries, as new industries develop across Asia, Central and South America, and Africa. The research unit of the China National Petroleum Corp. predicts that China's oil demand will top out around 13.8 million barrels per day in about 2030. In addition, coal usage will remain stable worldwide for the next five years.
Commissioner Booker, I hate to interrupt, but you're up on five minutes, are you going to be wrapping this up?
I'm going to be wrapping up shortly, yeah. Yeah, I'm an elected official, so I don't, I don't have the five minutes. Please don't interrupt. What we do here today with this resolution will have absolutely no effect on global climate change. However, we do know that fully implementing this resolution will cost the township tens or hundreds of millions of dollars to implement. Removing every oil or gas heater in every township building, converting every police car and tactical response vehicle to battery power, putting in charging infrastructure to power up all those vehicles every day, converting every piece of power equipment to, from chainsaws, lawn tractors, support vehicles, plus charging infrastructure, converting every fire truck and piece of firefighting equipment to battery power, eliminating every internal combustion engine in the township, bringing on and changing support people to service those vehicles will be extremely expensive and time-consuming. Why would we, as a township, spend tens or hundreds of millions of dollars to conform with this resolution when we know that the effort will have no discernible effect on increasing global temperatures? Certain taxpayer expenditures for Radnor for negligible effect on the goal seems to me to be an improper use of township funds. Imagine if in 1900, the township passed a resolution saying, "We will go to all gasoline-powered vehicles and get rid of all horses and hand tools by 1900." vehicles and get rid of all horses and hand tools by 1920." That wasn't necessary, and yet, that's eventually what happened. All horse-drawn carriages in the township were taken out of service. We do not need to have a resolution to go to the most efficient energy sources. If it's the best alternative, the township will go to the method of power because it's the most cost-effective way to do. Market forces should be allowed to work in this and all other instances. The market will dictate what sources of energy are best for the township and best for the constituents. We need not have a mantra of climate change. If climate change is, in this case, man-made and is occurring, the damage is done and will continue to be done irrespective of what we do here today. The only thing that this is sure to do is to increase bureaucracy, increase expenditures, and to increase the inefficiency of our government and of our, of our energy uses. So, I ask this board to take out the religious mantras that are part of this resolution and to talk about what the serious solutions are for the township, and that was rejected. This is not a serious proposal. This is not realistic. And I know it's aspirational, because it has to be, because it's, that's all it can possibly be, but it's not the right thing for Radnor to do.
So, I'd briefly like to echo what Lisa had led with and what Luke has led with as well, which was that we need to pass the resolution specifically in order to deal with some of the issues related to climate change. But I'd like to add to what they listed in terms of the more abstract effects, and it has the practical and local one, which was the flooding that we had on August 13th, and the other increased storm events that we're having both over the course, over the course of the last few years and the ones that are anticipated into the future. This isn't something abstract, which is going to harm other people elsewhere, it's something concrete, which is hurting all of us right now. It has real costs that largely are being shouldered onto the taxpayers and not the municipality as they pay to replace their cars and repair their homes. Although, we, of course, as a municipality, do have our own increased costs, which we then, as you can imagine, push right back onto the taxpayer. I'd also like to say in brief rebuttal to what you heard, that my electric car is faster, cheaper, and better than Rich's Porsche.
Absolutely not the case.
Okay.
Let's get out there and race.
I can't condone that.
Well, especially if we race for four hours.
Don't say that in front of the police, please. Well, thank you all very much. You know, I don't necessarily agree with you, Commissioner Booker. I think that, to what Commissioner Clark said, you know, we need to, this is a small part, and I don't know if I can prevail upon either maybe Mr. Nocini or Mr. McNellis. And I know the police as well. I mean, we just approved hybrid, some hybrid, the purchase of hybrid cars, some of our other, I think, equipment. So, I think to have this resolution is something that reminds us that we need to keep this in the forefront. I think our staff is already keeping this in the forefront, and as we need to replace things, as we need to, you know, look at new opportunities, this will be in the mix. And I think that's what we're asking for at this point. I think that's what this resolution reminds us of, so...
Again, I would say, let's get what's best for the township at the lowest cost for the taxpayers and not have an artificial resolution driving purchases, especially when it's more expensive. But I do want to just make the point, Jack Larkin is saying that global climate change caused the flooding in Radnor in August of 2018. So, you have a direct, you have, you have direct evidence of that that occurred? That's what you said, right?
I also strongly believe in the theory of gravity and the heliocentric model of the solar system. Yes.
I would remind, I would remind everyone who believes that this, this is unquestioned science. We had unquestioned science that the Earth was the center of the universe at one point. We had unquestioned science that, that people, brown and black people were inferior to white people.
Point of order, Mr. Booker already had his chance to come in.
Wait, wait, wait. We had unquestioned science that eugenics was the appropriate way to deal with society and have, and we had sterilizations and others.
Okay, Commissioner Booker, I think you've gone way off base now.
So, my point is that the science, over time, changes. People do not always, 50 years from now, I do not believe that we'll be talking, when we were younger, we had, the population explosion was going to end the planet by 2019.
Okay.
So, the science changes, people's understanding changes, I'd be very careful about a religious mantra and that the science is unfallible. These are all based on models, and we're talking about its century, at the end of the century, 80 years from now.
Can we move the vote?
Just, just one thing, my, when I met with my neighbors in South Wayne after the flooding, they blamed it on, they said the storms got worse, right? And they blamed it on two things. That was their main problem. It wasn't that there was flooding, there was always some flooding. They said it's gotten worse, and the majority belief was, number one is due to development, number two, due to climate change. That's the belief of my neighbors, and that's who I work for, that's one of the reasons why I'm interested in this and why I think that this will help. And I think if more communities do this, I think it will help down the line with these types of things, along with other solutions that I'm not going to get into.
Last thing, if this will help, can you show me what empirical evidence we have that this will make a difference in the flooding in Wayne? Any data that you can show? This is just a belief, isn't it?
No, no, there's science.
Is there data that you can show that it won't?
No, I don't have data one way or the other, but I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make this point. You're making the point that it's climate change causing flooding. I would say that it's waivers and development that's causing the flooding. That's what we have.
Okay, we'll work to control all of those. All right, yeah, well, I'm going to first call for staff comment. Is there any staff comment on this resolution? Public comment on the resolution?
I'm reading a formal statement approved by the Board of the League of Women Voters, and I'm Roberta Winters, President of the League with whom I am speaking. Our members throughout the nation recognize climate change as the greatest environmental challenge of our generation. As those who have been on the forefront of environmental protection movement for decades, the League of Women Voters has consistently supported efforts such as these to protect our natural resources and public health. The League believes that damaging impact of climate change requires action from both individuals and governmental agencies at the local, state, national, and international levels. A vision for 100% clean renewable energy can help put our community, our country, and our planet on the road to sustainability. Ready for 100 provides a resolution that will encourage conservation and renewable energy. This is an important step in raising awareness to build stronger supports for effective climate change solutions. We further believe that a path toward a clean energy future will strengthen our economy and create jobs while reducing threats to health and protecting our resources that we depend upon for survival. We thank the Board of Commissioners for your consideration and timely action on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Any other public comment this evening? Please.
Now, Murphy, 627 Glen Murray Road. I didn't come here to speak on this topic tonight. A little bit of snarky comments going back and forth, which really doesn't help the debate. You know, in reality, Rich is really right, nobody wants to hear what it has to say when you talk against this whole so-called mantra of climate change. The problem I have with the resolution is the way that it's stated. It says 100% clean and renewable energy. That is statistically unattainable, whether it's Radnor Township, or the United States, Pennsylvania, or the world, it is statistically unattainable. And I think if you amended the resolution to say, "A goal would be to move toward," or to have the opportunity to approach, or to have it as a goal to have more clean renewable energy, that would be the ideal change. But 100%, you have to understand, is absolutely unrealistic. I have a degree in mechanical engineering, I practiced engineering in the field, it is not attainable.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Take your time. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Ruth Mooney, and I live at 500 East Lancaster Avenue. And this, this is particularly important to me. And, you know, when we talk about solar energy and difficulties in storing and transporting, those are all being addressed, and they will be taken care of. But I will tell you, I have grandchildren who live in Westchester near the pipeline. That is a, so there's a transportation issue of transporting, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking very well because I'm so emotional about this. But, you know, so we had eminent domain condemning people's property to put that pipeline in. And now, schools are at risk, businesses are at risk, homes are at risk, my grandkids are at risk. And then, I have another granddaughter who lives in Philadelphia. So, since the pipelines aren't able to move, the oil as well, now the bomb trains are back. And they go right down the Schuylkill River, they go right past Chop, they go right past the University of Pennsylvania, they go right past my granddaughter. And that is a tremendous concern to me, and I don't, I don't care about your not believing in the science. That is, that's just an accident waiting to happen. And every time I see those bomb trains, or I see those oil pipelines, I think, "We've got to do something about this." And I don't see any way of doing anything about it, except leaving the oil in the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, I will go ahead and call the vote on Resolution 2019-8, A Vision for a 100% Clean Renewable Energy Future. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to one.
Nay.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for being here, and it's so nice to see again so many students here. So, thank you all for being here.
Can we just express our great thanks?
Absolutely, please, come up, it's fine.
We really want to thank you for your support. Yes, this is very much a first step, but there are a lot of people here who support this, and a lot of people in the community that are anxious to see Radnor take this initiative, so thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, for our township's leadership in addressing this issue.
And thank you for all your hard work on this. I know you ladies have been working tirelessly on it, so thank you. All right. Presentation, Recognizing and Celebrating the Month of February as Black History Month. Mr. Zankowski?
Thank you. Mr. Zankowski was here tonight, and he had to leave. So, if it would be all right, we'll have him present at a future board meeting.
Okay, was it around the sports?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, we'll have him present in future. Okay. Then, on to our friends from the Willow's Park Preserve. Thank you all very much, you've been very patient, and thank you all for being here. So, Ms. Long, and...
I'm telling folks to leave?
Am I telling folks to leave? No, people don't have to leave, they're welcome to leave, but this is the Willow's Park Preserve presentation, so maybe they'd like to stay.
I thought you were asking people to leave, that's what, thank you for coming, I thought you were saying goodbye, that's what.
I was thanking them for being here.
Are we good?
You are just fine. Thank you very much. For being here and for coming.
Thank you, Lisa. So, good evening. I am Tish Long, President of the Willow's Park Preserve's Board of Directors, and I am so delighted to be here tonight with my fellow board members to present an exciting path forward for the Willow's Mansion. At last month's meeting, I shared many accomplishments related to the Willow's Park Preserve's organizational development, such as our nearly full board... Oh, that's okay. It's technical, I think we better wait. Our nearly full board, which you can see, posted. Our outstanding professional team, that includes the recent addition of attorney David Falcone of Saul Ewing, Arnstein &amp; Laer, who is handling our legal work pro bono. Thank you, David. A solid balance sheet with over a half a million dollars that you can see in assets, and news about a generous private donation for the hiring of an executive director to lead our day-to-day operations. I mentioned then that we would be back to share our exciting vision and plan for the mansion's future, and here we are. Since we have so much information to cover, I kindly ask that you hold your questions until the end, and thank you for your cooperation. The plan that we will present tonight is the culmination of more than 10,000 professional and volunteer hours in the fields of architectural design, construction and development, finance, law, communications, fundraising, business planning, and operations. To put that into perspective, the time invested is equivalent to Radnor Township's hiring four full-time staffers to work exclusively on this project for the past year. Over the course of the past seven months, we've designed, planned, vetted, refined, and we've planned some more. Our stewardship of this important public asset has been our guiding light, and we take that responsibility very seriously. As such, we've approached this with great care and diligence, knowing full well that our work must yield considerable benefit for all citizens, not just for today, but for generations to come. For many reasons, the mansion's revitalization is in the best interest of the public. I know that you, the BOC members, agree with this, as indicated by your vote to move forward with the Willow's Park Preserve's lease last May. Parks and green spaces are cherished places of respite and solitude, where people reconnect with beauty and experience nature. In the busy, frenetic world we live in, spaces like this are sacred and vital to our physical, mental, and emotional well-being. Yet, so much of this beautiful, open space that wants to find the main line is being gobbled up for development. In the process, unique vintage homes that create a true sense of space have been lost to the wrecking ball. The Willow's Mansion and its grounds could have been lost too, if not for the foresight and fortitude of the township leaders at that time. We take that decision somewhat for granted today, but looking back, it must have been a difficult choice. Some of you may not remember the early 1970s, but I certainly do. Economic times were extremely hard, the energy crisis loomed, interest rates were rising, and the country was experiencing the worst recession since World War II. Despite all these very real problems, the leaders of Radnor Township looked far into the future and made a decision that we all agree yielded immeasurable benefits, and we are all so glad they did. The mansion, which sits on the hilltop of this now public park, has stunning views of the pond, meadows, trails, and streams, the best views in the region. Immense natural beauty is visible from every window of the house, and especially from the terrace. But while the mansion is shuttered and dark, opportunity is truly lost, as its lifeless silhouette mars the park experience. Our big idea is to revitalize the mansion so that it becomes the beating heart and nerve center of the park. We want it to be a lively place where the doors are always open, welcoming people to drop by, learn new things, connect with friends, and deepen their appreciation of nature. Other historic homes in the region like Apple Ford, Stonely, Greystone Hall, Hilltop House, and Marion Tribute have very limited accessibility and are kept under strict lock and key between private event rentals. The Willow's Mansion will be different. Open every day during park hours, free of charge for the public's use and enjoyment. We will rent the mansion 25 times per year for private events of 150 people or less to aid our sustainability, but it will not be the mansion's primary purpose as in the past. This new life and purpose will be a model for other townships and an opportunity to view neglected structures, not for their burden, but for their true potential. Like the township's purchase of the Willow's in the 70s, this plan is another big, forward-thinking vision that will pay dividends for generations to come. The benefits are many, and include preserving the architectural and social history of the region and our unique sense of space, strengthening community by creating a place to gather, connect, discover, and engage. connect, discover and engage, enhancing quality of life by learning new things and deepening our connection to nature. It will become a community destination, a nature retreat, a place to learn new things and meet new people, a location for community events and festivals, and a premier private event site. Here is a photo of the Willow's Mansion today. And here is an artist's rendering of the exciting future ahead. Now, I would like to ask Skip Kundra to come forward and share the details on the project management.
At least I don't have to lift the mic.
That's right.
You're taller.
Good evening, everyone. I have prepared remarks as well. I think it's important to explain once again the level of planning that went into crafting of our plan. As Tish mentioned, we took our job very seriously and left no stone unturned in our approach. Our first order of business on the project management side was to conduct a forensic analysis of the buildings to account for all the problems, and there's lots of problems that are visible and invisible, or not visible, prior to embarking on schematic design. Warren Clayter Architects, Warren's here with us tonight, and Griffiths Construction executed this on our behalf using infrared imaging, boom lifts, pipe scopes, opening walls, peeking in corners, et cetera. The report uncovered typical problems you'd expect in a shuttered old house, but nothing that was insurmountable. Here are some examples. Electrical hotspots in need of immediate attention, a leaky roof that's causing interior damage in multiple locations and will eventually impact the integrity of the house if not addressed, runoff from poor gutter systems, which cause water infiltration in the basement, a steady deterioration overall due to lack of use and regular maintenance. It's all happening whether we want it to or not. Here are some photos of the interior of the house that illustrate the present conditions. The ceilings on the third floor are particularly bad, some of them. Library actually is surviving, but it's next on the list, I guess the hit list. Once we knew the problem areas, we moved on to design schematics. In this phase, Warren Clayter Architects, which specializes in traditional custom residential designs, historic restoration, and adaptive reuse, enlisted the help of TVBaw, an architectural firm well-versed in commercial design and code. The WPP Board and the architectural team collaborated and came up with a design vision that fit the mansion's new mission. The top goal was to create a new, dedicated public space that would enhance the park experience and take advantage of the sweeping views with significant outdoor entertainment space. That design priority was accomplished with an indoor-outdoor addition that we are going to be looking at tonight, that takes advantage of the sweeping views with significant outdoor... I repeated myself, sorry. The WPP also requested that the room flow be improved on the first floor of the mansion so that it functioned better as an event space. The township staff asked that the feasibility study include labor at prevailing rates, site upgrades such as a new water line from the street, new sewer lateral, parking lot, driveway widening, and other public works. In addition, Warren and team designed using the highest code standards, the IBC 2015, though those standards were later relaxed to IEBC 2009, per the email that I provided everyone with a copy of on 10/29 from Steve Norsini. The gold standard approach that was detailed in the 100-page feasibility study that you all received last year, that you did all receive last year, that study accounted for every conceivable possibility, including construction costs estimated at the highest code standards and expensive add-ons such as geothermal. As such, it was not a true reflection of the project's cost, but it is a study of the many possibilities. The final step was to tackle the big question, what will this project actually cost? To do this, we engaged the services in the last 35 days of three general contractors who took the design schematics and prepared construction estimates in terms of a scope, and based on a phased approach. The contractors were Cullen Construction, C Raymond Davis, and the Howe Group. From these estimates, we arrived at a solid project number that is manageable, and we are ready to move forward with design development, bidding the project, and starting construction. Before I jump into the execution phase, I'm going to ask Tish and Warren to talk you through the design.
Let me go. Okay. So, here's what the completed mansion will look like. Do you have anything to add, Warren?
You wish to like me to point at the board?
Yeah, yeah, you can just make comments after I do that.
You want it on the table here, you want to look at that?
Great.
In tackling this project, there were many objectives to consider. Preserving the architectural integrity of the structure and the legacy of its original architect, Charles Barton Keane, was very important to us. Restoring the red tile roof and the mansion's wooden banister are examples. We also knew and confirmed in meetings with caterers that the room flow needed to be improved so that the mansion functioned better as an event space. We accomplished this by opening walls between the dining room, library, and billiards room, and into the foyer. We also created better indoor-outdoor transitions and added bathrooms. You will notice in this rendering... This is the rendering that's on, actually. That there is a new terrace on the north lawn. We call it the Whispering Terrace. It is a lovely pond view and will be tented as needed for events. A walkway connects the Whispering Terrace to the House Terrace and the Wishing Well Courtyard. This is kind of like playing Clue. Notice too that the red terracotta roof has been restored to its original design, and how absolutely beautiful it looks. On the south side of the mansion is an indoor-outdoor addition that takes full advantage of the sweeping pond views. This will be the dedicated public space accessible daily. It's a key component of the vision. As you can see, there is a covered porch with a stunning rooftop terrace. This addition point adds close to 2,000 square feet of indoor space, including three new bathrooms, an elevator, and stair tower. The accessible entrance is also on this side of the mansion. Do you want to take a minute, Warren? Do you want to talk about any of these things, Warren?
Yep.
Okay.
So, as you can see, the improved accessibility access to the terraces, the indoor and outdoor addition space providing views down towards the pond view, and then the Whispering Terrace up on the north side, and again, matching the terracotta roof that was their original, in the original design, the Charles Barton Keane architect, and then...
Sir?
Go ahead.
Here in this rendering, showing the mansion from the north side, the garage will be used for event storage. The Wishing Well Courtyard will be revitalized in use for festivals, farmers' markets, craft fairs, car shows, and private events. Want to talk about any of this? Maybe talk about that?
So, sensitive historic additions have been added where needed to comply with required upgrades for code, both on the courtyard side, as well as the pond-facing side, again, complimenting and having a nod to the historic architecture that exists, including the restoration of the fountain area here for additional events for public use.
That's absolutely perfect. So, the interior of the library is there. Here's the interior rendering of the library, which really is the signature room in the house. You can see that the doorways have been added on either side of the fireplace, which actually was in the original structure in 1910, when Charles Barton Keane did the design, to improve room flow, and the paneling has been restored. When completed, the mansion will be a badge of honor for Radnor Township, a place where we all can be proud, and a place that certainly will distinguish Radnor from all others. I would just ask Warren if you have any other elements that you'd like to comment on.
So, I would just like to thank the township staff for helping us through the early design process. They were outstanding and terrific to work with. And I think that we are all very fortunate to have the hard-working volunteers and the WPP that has really picked up this mantle to carry this forward. It's an absolute gem, and it's been an honor and a privilege for our firm and for TVBaw as well to be involved in this project, and I think it's time that we take the next step forward.
So now, we're going to return to Skip, and I know you all want to hear the numbers, and this is what's coming.
So, the numbers are not necessarily as scary as you may think. And we would not recommend proceeding if they were scary. So I think these are real numbers, we've worked on. The contractors put tremendous amount of effort into it, very specific in the estimates. I think you have those up there as well. Our strategy is to execute the project in two phases. We have $2.7 million. And we'd like to get started immediately so that we can prevent further deterioration and bigger problems down the road, with your approval. The first phase, the building stabilization phase, will begin this summer, using the funds secured to date, which includes both WPP's current funds and the township contribution. This phase will take approximately 10 months and includes a full restoration of the exterior, replacing the roof, replacing and repairing windows, doors, repairing stucco, painting the exterior, replacing shutters and downspouts, repairing the chimneys, which are actually in pretty bad shape. In this phase, we would like to demo the interior as well, add all-new electrical, HVAC, plumbing, rough plumbing, and fire suppression, rough out the bathrooms and kitchen, and insulate and drywall, all rooms but the billiards room because it ties into the new addition. To arrive at a cost of the building stabilization phase, we took the three construction estimates from the general contractors, went with the highest number to err on the conservative side, and added a 15% owner's contingency, design fees, and design contingency and salary for the project manager. Labor was priced with non-pervailing wage. This is one reason why the numbers are not scary. That brought the total for this phase to $2,662,000. Currently, we have $2.7 million in hand, so we are fully funded and arguably ready to go. Please note that we did not factor in an escalation rate, since we contemplate starting on a relatively short time basis. The study had a 7.5% escalation rate and projected not starting for 20 months, while more damage would occur to the structure, et cetera. Phase two would be the interior improvements to the mansion, including finishing the bathrooms, the kitchen, flooring, finish work, painting, plus the build-out of the new addition. On the south side of the mansion, that includes the new interior space, the covered porch, the elevator, the rooftop deck, the Whispering Terrace, and renovation of the House Terraces. We've already begun fundraising for this phase and have had several strong prospects lined up. We believe however, and I can't stress this enough, we believe however that visible progress is the key to our fundraising efforts. And we have the money to get started, and there's no time like the present. Phase two would begin in May of 2020, and would also be approximately 10 months in length. The cost is estimated at $2,982,000, a number that our fundraising professionals are confident that we can achieve. Provided that all goes according to plan, we are looking at a grand opening in the spring of 2021. To move this along, we propose executing the design and development work, the bid process, and the construction contract via the Willow's Park Preserve. Now, the lease actually says that the township would have the contract, run the contract, et cetera. But from a labor cost situation, as well as flexibility, we're asking you to consider letting the WPP run the contract, in absolute concert with staff, to get it done the right way. We will hire a seasoned project manager to oversee execution with oversight from staff. A couple of things that would need to align to make this happen. First, the Board of Commissioners must agree to allocate the township's appropriation to Phase One, the building stabilization phase. It will be combined with the WPP's money of $1 million. Any funds left over, and there should be, it could be a little left over, will be rolled over to Phase Two. Secondly, the BOC must weigh in on running the construction project through the WPP, as I just stated a moment ago. But before we can get into that full discussion, we would like to get one more board member a chance to speak, and I'd like to ask Al Murphy to come up, who's Chair of the Fundraising Committee, and give a brief discussion of our strategy. He has another third point that we want to bring out in his presentation.
Board, thank you for the time. Never seen my name in such big letters before in public, so the fundraising aspect, this is where the rubber meets the road. We've got, for a $6 million project cost, we've got about $3 million covered, not quite. You assume some flexibility in that $6 million number, we've got to raise three to three and a half million. The donations and the donors that we've spoken with, there's a lot of enthusiasm for this project, and the reason it is, is because it's a jewel in the crown. If you don't have estates like this that are available for public use, they don't exist that much on the main line. The ones that do exist have already been converted. The difficulty that we have is the donors are suggesting to us that the lease period is too short. If they're going to commit money, what they would like to have is an extension in the lease period, so they feel that within a 10-year period, they don't have something else happening to the building, and their money basically not being properly used. So one of the requests will be, is if we can extend the lease on the building to an appropriate period where the donors are not going to treat that as a resistance point. And when you think about it, that makes a lot of sense. The people that we're talking to can write seven-figure checks, and no one's going to write a second seven-figure check unless they have confidence that their legacy is going to be around for quite a while, and this is going to be one of the key decisions that need to be made. Combination of what's been drawn up by Clayton and everyone, the concept, this is an eminently sellable project, and I think we can do it just by staying within Radnor Township. There's a lot of money on the main line, but the staying inside Radnor Township is probably the best way to go. You make this a Radnor-oriented project, you know, supported by Radnor-oriented volunteers, supported by the Board, which has already made a commitment both emotionally and financially. I think this is something that could get done, probably shouldn't wait too much longer. This project has been out there for quite a while, and it might be a good idea to get on it right now.
What's the lease adjustment from two?
To 25. From 10 to 25.
From 10 to 25, and with the 10-year, is there... There's extensions that are part of that, or are there not?
Yeah, there are extensions, but as with any extension, there's always a qualification, you know, if something happens, then you get the option to roll forward. Five years? One year?
One year.
Ten, one-year extensions, so, you know, with 10 one-year extensions, it's just not going to fly.
So what would be with the 25, same terms? 25 and then one-year extensions, or have they changed?
We've had different discussions about this. It looks like a 10-year lease was, and once you go year to year, that doesn't have that continuity looked to it, that commitment. I would personally like to see something like a 10-year, which we have, which is not a difficult threshold to reach again, and then three fives.
Contingent upon?
Well, everybody's going to hate me in the back, but I'm going to say something.
I'll step aside.
And I've been antsy about this for a while. And I've been antsy about this for a while. There's different ways to preserve a legacy. Extending the lease to 25 years is probably the easiest one, but, you know, there are intangibles in that. I mean, there could be, for some reason, a failure of the WPP 18 years from now, and suddenly it's gone. There has to be a way, and maybe in a meeting between Dave Falcone and John Rice on an initial basis, there has to be a way to craft some way to preserve the donation, that the structure doesn't get torn down in 18 years because we have another recession. So I don't know if that's some kind of a covenant or a commitment to continuing use for the purposes that the WPP stands for, but there must be something we could do like that. I'd love to see that. At a minimum, though, our ask tonight is 10 and at least three fives.
And it's probably not a good idea to negotiate contract terms at a public meeting, but if we can get the buy-in that we need to extend the lease period, that's really the goal tonight. And then we can draw up language and agree on language, hopefully with the board, that will allow us to make this a go-forward. But you can see the difficulty with the 10-year. It's too short a period. Fundraising I've done up at Penn State and other places, the donors, investors want a commitment. They want to know that the legacy is going to exist and continue, certainly longer than the 10-year period. The interesting thing about this, I think that the time is ripe. There's a fair amount of money available, and the fact that the township has already supported this, the fact that there's already been a lot of work done, mostly on a pro-bona basis. I think this is something that we can jump on right now, and we should probably do that to meet the timeframe that the team has put forward. So I would encourage some action on that tonight, probably not as it relates to the contract terms, but at least the concept would be good.
So I don't, I think at best what we could do is seek consensus for our solicitor to go and talk with Mr. Falcone and see what that might look at. I don't know that we, at this point, can direct, but we could, if there's consensus of the board, we could have our solicitor go back and speak with Mr. Falcone and then...
You could authorize me to meet with Dave and rework. Is that the only aspect of the lease we're talking about, just the term?
No, it's not. That's why I'm here, to add two more. You are, thank you, Al. So really, thank you for your time and attention tonight and the opportunity to certainly partner with Radnor Township on this very transformative project. It's my true hope that in 50 years from now, the citizens and leaders of our great community will look back and admire the foresight and leadership that has brought us to this moment. So, moving forward from what Al just was asking for, we do have three key elements that we feel need to have happen now in order for us to proceed. One certainly is the lease. Number two is the fact that we really would like to go ahead with the phasing idea, to start the building stabilization as quickly as we could. We certainly have the funds at hand, the township funds and our donors' funds to make this happen. And the third thing is we really would like to get approved the construction concept, running it through the WPP. And as what Skip just said, certainly we would work in concert with the township, but we feel it would certainly significantly lower construction costs, and it would be a clear benefit to both the township and to the Willis Park Preserve. So those are the three things that we think are really essential for us to be able to move forward, because right now, we are, we've sort of maxed out and we are stalled. So at this point, we'd like to open up for questions. Any questions for any of us?
So when you're planning to take out the asbestos and the lead paint, to the extent that there is any, my recollection was that there were a couple of issues that were going to have significance like that. Is that going to be in Phase One or Phase Two?
That would be in Phase One. That would be in Phase One.
You know, what I've learned in a bigger way than normal, I mean, I've done some construction in other places before this, but there's a lot more work to do on this than what we proposed so far. There's a certain amount of analysis that'll go into each line item. And in terms of timing, probably abatement should be done first, but it might not make sense if some of the abatements in the addition that's being torn down, then, I mean, the part, the solarium and all that, we'll get rid of that when we get rid of that. In other words, we'll do the right thing. The estimates in here by the, some of the contractors, which you'll see, have actual estimates for abatement, and they're pretty small, so it's not hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Would you guys object to doing all of the abatement up front, if that was a request?
No, no.
The concern that I have, I don't want to hide the ball, the concern that I have is if, for whatever reason, we're unable to move forward because of a lack of funding or because of a serious recession, or whatever, I don't want to borrow trouble. But I don't want to be in a scenario in which the abatement has to be done at township expense because the project doesn't move forward and it didn't get done when we spent the money. I'd much rather do everything now, we're guaranteed. That makes it a whole lot easier for me to say that I would support this because I can then go back and say to the people who are going to complain to me, "Why didn't you spend this money on stormwater or on whatever?" We have to spend the money in order to deal with the abatement, no matter what. The township has the obligation. So if we were going to ultimately walk away from the project, we're not losing any township dollars on this, which is kind of a macabre way to look at it. I know what you're all putting time and energy into, but I do want to make sure that we're covered. And it sounds like the answer would be yes.
I'm up here for additional questions, but, you know, at a certain point in time, I want to give Al another moment to speak as well. But, go ahead.
Sounds like you're saying you'd be...
We certainly would do that.
I think we have to have further discussion about that, Jack, because the scheduler impact and just the good sense, project management may not support doing it that way. And the risk, we'll balance that against what we evaluate the risk to be.
Sure. If there's truly a good reason not to do it that way, that would be a different issue. But it's going to be tough for me to imagine that you have somebody who's doing the abatement who wouldn't be at least as cost-effective to do everything all in one go.
Well, that'll roll out with the project schedules, I would think.
Knowing the project, and I'm Bill Lonnahan, TV Ball Architecture. Knowing the project, we can definitely do all the abatement in the first phase without question. It's a logical approach. We could certainly do that.
Does anyone have any?
One other question that I had, that I think has been raised several times, is what is the timing of each dollar to be spent? Who has the first dollar that goes in? Who has the last dollar? And how does the funding mechanism work for township dollars versus WPP dollars for each of these phases, and in what amounts?
Yeah, that's right. That's okay, that's for this project or any project that any university builds, is the state doesn't want to be the first and last dollar in, then you end up with a shell. So I think we need to coordinate exactly how that affects your money versus the private money to make sure that the project gets done. But that's a completely reasonable question to ask in terms of how all this gets phased in. But, you know, at some point, we have to, you know, we have to step off the curb to get to the other side. And what we're looking for is guidance, not only on some of the terms, but the ability to start taking that first step. That's really the key. And then we'll be able to make the fundraising work.
Madam President, those terms are already in the agreement that we have with the WPP. So those already terms in that, Rich, that you asked about, are already in the agreement. So if there was a, some amendment that the WPP would like to present to the board to change that, then you could consider that amendment.
I just would add, Bob, you're absolutely correct. It is in the lease, but the lease states something other than what we're asking for tonight. We really want to do the phased idea, and the lease states we would do the whole project at once and therefore needed to be fully funded all at once. So, and so Bob and I are both right, but it would need to be addressed, because we really would like to start with Phase One and then go to Phase Two, which is not in the lease.
Well, you'll start your fundraising, so you're not going to spend the money for Phase One and then go out and fundraise. You guys are going to be starting your fundraising at the, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, so it'll be in current. And then the fact that you have already, what, close to $3 million in hand, is definitely, you know, attractive. It's almost like you've already gone through your silent phase, and now, yeah, you're going out there to ask for the big bucks. And you think, so from a feasibility standpoint, and I'll direct this to you, Mr. Murphy, that you think that there's the capacity out there for the additional $3 million?
Yeah, I mean, and there is the, I mean, statistically, something you can take to your next party, there are 40,000 501(c)(3)'s between Washington and Boston. 40,000, yeah, of which, you know, we've all affiliated with one. That's why our solution's probably driven to focus on the money in Radnor Township, because, you know, QED, people have a vested interest, and there's plenty of money here in the township. We should be able to do it locally. There are others that we can go to, but I think if we get, we take a big bite of the apple right here locally, that's going to go a long way, and then the rest of the money will follow. And then people, I mean, one of the things in fundraising today is impact. Everywhere you pick up the Wall Street Journal, everybody talks about impact investing. This is a classic example of impact investing. People, you know, don't want to buy Apple, per se, even though they like to see it go up, what they want to do is they want to see their legacy right here in the township. That's really the key.
Madam President, if I may, I just want to commend this group. They did a tremendous job. I mean, the drawings and everything is fantastic. I would ask the board to consider these amendments, to move them along and expedite these, because, again, this is a, I will always have called it a diamond in the rough, that we can actually bring right back and some of the concerns over, you know, the use in that 50 years from now. I think how it was obtained was, it was a house but never converted to actual public use. So now this is going to address all those concerns and be an asset. And I think 25 years is reasonable for those commitments, I think, to be spoken about, for people to commit those terms and dollars. So my recommendation would be is to have the solicitor work with their legal team and staff there to come up with some amendments. And I'm not sure if 30 days is too long to be able to hammer that out and then be back to the board at the second meeting in March and present this back. But it's an absolutely tremendous plan that's been come up with.
I'd like to jump in. So, actually, Tish, if you could come up. So it's a two-phase plan, is that correct?
Two-phase plan, and we have the money in hand right now to start Phase One, which will tremendously boost our fundraising campaign.
Okay, and the total amount's going to be about $6 million for the whole project?
Exactly.
Is that correct? Okay. So, I know that you said 25-year lease. I actually, I have a little bit of real estate myself. When you amortize a building, it's typically on a 30-year time schedule. So I actually, to be honest with you, don't think that you guys are doing...
I actually do believe that is what David Falcone recommended, was a 29-year lease.
20, so, 29. So, I mean, I would be at least 30, if not more. That's $6 million over 30 years, what, $300,000 a year, give or take, if you do a straight line. You know, you're putting your equity, your sweat, your time, and probably a lot of your money in it as well. So I don't think 25 is long enough. I would actually like to see it either 30 or 40 years. So that would be my recommendation.
Great, okay. What are your thoughts about the, running the contract through the WPP to save, as a money's cost saver?
That all needs to be discussed with Mr. Falcone. I mean, I don't think, discussing that and negotiating the terms, and just on the 40-year lease, the State Department of Revenue considers anything, or they've been known to consider anything over a 29-year lease as a sale of the property, which creates problems. So, that's why...
20 then 29 is fine. There you go. There you go. I would, okay.
All right, well, I think that we have, is there consensus of those who are here that to go ahead and have Mr. Rice meet with Mr. Falcone and then bring something back for us to look at around those, I think, all three of those points that have been brought forward? Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Don't you need to provide some direction on what this board wants?
So I'm guessing that we are directing our solicitor to go and meet with the legal representation for the WPP to discuss the extension of the lease, to discuss the phasing idea as well as part of that, and the construction concept, so running the construction through the WPP with the township providing.
Which all of that's going to involve probably three or four different provisions of the lease to be revised. So, you know, that'll have to come back to the board. I don't know what Mr. Falcone, some of this I'm hearing tonight for the first time. So I don't know what Mr. Falcone, you know, or WPP, how they want to do that, but they're, Rich, they're mainly the three issues. So the term of the lease is just what number is the board comfortable with, whether it's 25 or 29 or 20, you know, or something in between that. Right now, actually, right now, the lease states that the 10-years doesn't start until they have a certificate of occupancy. So that hasn't even started yet.
Right.
It's not as if the 10 started when this was approved. That's triggered to them having a CO to actually use the building. So, you know, the 20- or 25-year or 29-year lease would be triggered the same way, I would think.
I would just like, sorry, let me just real quick.
So I think I have enough direction generally to bring this back and then tell you what the issues are.
And so to that end, clearly, time is of the essence for us. We have a few large donors slated to come in. We're trying to make the sale. And so what do you envision the timeframe to be?
I think that Bob said we would go ahead and John would meet with Dave, and then we'd have something for consideration.
Your second meeting in March.
Second meeting in March. So in the meantime, Bob is not here, but Steve is here. We certainly would like to start design development, and I don't know whether or not you would authorize us to start with that part of the work.
So I guess part of that is, the discussion was that the WPP bill let the contract, so that's something that the board would have to decide? And if that's the case, the contract can be written slightly different without the prevailing wages. It was also talked about that the township would be involved with picking the project manager slash clerk of the works to protect its asset, the project. So there'd be a little separation of things. So let me just put this out there, because, again, I'm just hearing about it tonight. You've got public dollars going into this project, which it's not a question for the board to approve or not approve, it's going to be a question of what the state says in terms of public contracts. So we can get an opinion from the Department of Labor whether or not, because of the $1.8 million of township money, that it has to be bid prevailing wage. The lease says that it's a public bidding contract. So if we're going to change that, we have to change that part of the lease also. So this is not a Board of Commissioners' call whether to do it or not, it's whether we're going to comply with the law, the way the law is written. And you have got a mix of public and private dollars here.
Understood.
So in those situations, what I've done is I can get a pretty quick answer from the Department of Labor whether or not the public bidding requirements have to be met. So you're going to have to deal with that eventuality. I suspect they will say, "You do." That's my, but we'll ask the question and see what they say.
Well, you're saying that they will require four-part competitive bidding? Well, that's not the answer that these folks would want to hear. So why wouldn't you attempt to talk to them on a no-name basis, would just give them the facts first and see what they're, if you go for an opinion, that would be the end of it?
It's the fact scenario. What the project, I don't have to use any names, but you have to get an opinion from them to make sure that we're not treading in an area that the township's going to have a problem with.
Well, we don't have to get an opinion. We could take a position on it.
Well, yeah, but I like to follow the law as much as I can.
Well, it's a gray area. It's obviously a gray area.
And not tell you what you want to hear. So I'm going to get a real opinion, and then we'll see what they say.
Well, you know, once again, Department of Labor, that's their interpretation of the law. That's not what, that's just not, if there is the law, if the law's clear, then give us the law on that. You don't need to go for an opinion. If you're going for an opinion, it's an opinion. So I just dispute, you know, everyone follows the law, that's what you're supposed to do. This is a gray area, so we need to make a call on how we want to do it.
It's not a gray area, Rich.
Well, if it's not a gray... Well, if it's not a gray area, then why are we even considering it?
You're being asked to consider it.
Keith, we're going to find out if it's something that we can do or not.
Well, John just says it's not a gray area. So he's saying we can't do it. That's what he's saying. He'll get an opinion that confirms that we can't do it, is what he's going to do.
Going to get an opinion and see what the Department of Labor says.
That's what I'm hearing. I don't hear him saying that we can't do it and he's making an opinion that confirms-
He just said the law's clear that we can't do it.
Okay, I think we're going to, is everyone up here comfortable with the direction that we've provided our, Mr. Rice here? So to go and speak with Mr. Falcone regarding a lease extension, the phasing idea, and to investigate the construction concept that's been presented to us and talk to those who will advise us as to whether or not it's legal or not.
In their opinion, but it did not address, it's a $6 million project, what, when is the 1.8 million from the township put in?
That's, that's part of the lease, what's in the lease.
Yeah, right, right now, what, right now, what the lease says is that the 100,000 is, is given upfront and the 1.7 is released once there's a construction contract executed by the township. That's what it says now. So if that's, and that 1.7 would be all for Phase One, right? And then the Phase Two is going to be the money beyond the initial 2.7 or 2.8. So, but the, the contract needs to spell that out, because it, right now, doesn't talk about phases, I don't believe at all.
Yeah, and if we run, run the project through WPP then, would that change, that changes the term of the lease, right? Because it's, we, we wouldn't be signing the construction contract.
It would be WPP, right.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it was, it was tied into that so that the bulk of the money wasn't going to be released over a period of time with nothing actually occurring. So you were, you were going to have a construction contract in hand that everyone approved of, and that would be the trigger of the bulk of the township's funds. That's the way it was set up.
And so you're going to go through all of that by the second meeting in March and have it all distilled for us?
Yes.
Sounds like a lot to, to get done, especially getting an opinion.
Done it before many times, Rich. It's not that difficult.
Lisa, yeah, I think we should go ahead and go forward with this. I'd also just like to make a quick edit to my last comment. It's actually 200,000 over 30 years, not 300, if it's a six, so I want to get the math right there.
All right, so I definitely am hearing consensus, everyone's in agreement, yes? All right, Mr. Rice, you have a new task.
May I make one, one comment?
Certainly.
It strikes me that there's so many menu items on this menu that there can be the township order and the WPP order. In other words, there can be two different contracts. And yours happens to be for a million, ours happens to be for a million, and we just allocate HVAC here, tile roof there, and we get, we get it done one way or another.
And John can work, we'll work that out with, with Dave and decide how it's going to be best. Skip's suggesting there'd be two different contracts or two different agreements.
It's a structure, you know, we actually had four phases at one time, but we could certainly divide the items in our new combined phase so that ours equal about a hun, a million and yours equal about a million seven.
Right, so the concept was a little bit different than what this board just authorized, John. Site work or certain aspects of this construction would be the township's component and the separate contract would be the WPP contract. And if that was the case, that there were two concurrent contracts, there could be one that was bid with public four-part bidding and one that was a private bid, if those were, those aspects were exclude, were able to be bifurcated.
You know, our, our goal is just to do this as perfectly and as inexpensively as possible.
Right.
I don't want to speak for the solicitor, but the prevailing wage laws are very specific. You cannot break up a contract to usurp prevailing wages. I'm not going to speak for John, but that's something he would have to research.
Well, there's, there's public funds and there's private funds, so if there's a way to split that up somehow, you know, that's, requires some more discussion and analysis. And we'll, you'll have an answer by your second meeting in, in March in terms of what needs to be done, and well before that, we'll have already spoken at WPP.
I think there's definitely clear ways to divide this project with the scopes of work, so that you can keep it very clear what would be prevailing wage, which would be the public dollars, and then other aspects of it that would be private dollars, and really delineate with the project documents so that we would meet all the requirements that Mr. Norris Senior was just referring to.
And we will have all those answers by the second meeting of March. So thank you, Mr. Rice, for that work. Anything else, Al? Oh, I thought you wanted to add something, okay. Well, great, thank you all very much. Any more questions before we let them go? Okay. Very nice presentation, wonderful work, thank you all, really, it's a wonderful community effort.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being so patient, because I know we took a long time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for being here and thank you for your, your patience. All right, we will move on to Ordinance 201901, adoption, no parking here to corner on west side of Radnor Avenue, 30 feet from the fire hydrant located on Conestoga Road at Radnor Avenue. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, any commissioner comment on this? Any staff comment on Ordinance 201901? Any public comment? I will call the vote. All those in favor of 201901 adoption of no parking here to corner on west side of Radnor Avenue, 30 feet from the fire hydrant located on Conestoga at Radnor Ave, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Six.
Oh, I didn't see he wasn't there, sorry. 6-0, thank you. Ordinance 201902, adoption, no through traffic on Woodland Court at Eagle Road, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any commissioner comment on this? Any staff comment on 201902? Any public comment? All right, all those in favor of 201902 adoption, no through traffic on Woodland Court at Eagle Road, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes 6 to 0, with Commissioner Farkey off the dais. Resolution 2019-13, authorization to apply for Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Justice, on Crime and Delinquencies Justice Assistance Grant under the $10,000 initiative for the Radnor Township Police Department Body-Worn Camera Project. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
The second? All right. Officer Dietrich, does somebody want to give us a little background on this one?
Yes, we're applying for a grant for, it's going to be a $40,000 grant, we're requesting the total amount of the project to outfit every officer with a body camera. We already have car cameras in all our marked, in unmarked cars that are used for patrol. This will give every officer a body camera. That'll be 66,000, so we're going to ask for 40,000 in the grant, and we're going to cost a attach of $26,000 ultimately.
So how many, how many will that provide?
45.
Forty.
Is that just for the camera, is that, there's some kind of device to record and store?
So it's, it actually covers all of it. We have to up our storage a little bit, we have to put a special high-speed line in, like I think it's a T1 line, we, that includes all the, the 66,000, the $66,000 includes everything that goes along with the package. We already have watch guard cameras in our cars, as I said, this is just an add-on to that system, so we just have to upgrade our system a little bit.
How does it tie in with the dash cams?
They actually coordinate, so when an officer makes a traffic stop, as soon as they turn on their lights, both the car camera and the body camera actually activate, and then those videos are coordinated. And the other thing that's pretty cool is when another officer shows up at the scene, that officer's video will link up, so when we go to view, when the administration goes to watch a scenario, all the videos associated with that incident are done live together. We can actually watch multiple views of the same incident together. We don't have to sit there and try to piece it together or splice anything on our own, it actually all merges together.
What are the benefits of having body cams versus not having them?
I think it offers transparency, it offers lower liability, people come in to file a complaint, we get to view it, we get to see what truly happened, we're not here to hide anything.
Couple of questions. How long is the data going to be stored for?
So there's a variety of, right now, we have, the way we retain records, if it's not, I don't know the specific dates, but there's a wide, if it's not, if it's something that's going to be critical or high liability, we hang on to it forever. If we have something where the officer is behind a disabled vehicle and there's no value in that, that will just get replaced, I think, every 30 or 60 days. We try not to fill the system up with too much, but anything that could be related to a crime, anything, and then anything also that's high liability, we actually burn on to dry. So anything that's evidence, anything, if you're on a DUI, that DUI we will mark at not to ever be destroyed, we also make a hard copy and put in our evidence room.
Are the officers or, I guess, any user administration, are they going to have access to turn it off? Who can turn it off, or once it's on, it's on?
No, you, they, they can turn it on and off, but we have, I don't want to speak to the policy of the body camera, it's going to be a little bit different, but on the car camera, there's very specific protocols. If they turn it off, they have to turn it off, they have to justify turning it off, they turn it back on. If they were turned off on an incident where they're not supposed to turn it off, that could be a cause for disciplinary action.
Okay. And is the public going to have access to these videos? Can they, is it going to be such as like a right-to-know?
We would, we, everything-
What's the transparent, pardon, sorry, what's the transparency policy, so to speak?
We refer everything to the right-to-know process, just as if anybody's going to go, come in and get an incident report, if they want to see the video, it's going to be the same protocol.
So they would be allowed to see it, or would it have to be a case related to them? Or if there was a case that was unrelated, say a high-profile case, can a member of the public, maybe not even in the community, I guess, request that information and what's the policy going to be?
I'll refer to the, that's a right-to-know request, and we'll refer to the attorney.
Township gets requests all the time for incident reports, records of criminal investigations, and there's a right-to-know law, and then there's something called CRIA, which is the Criminal Records History and Information Act, which prohibits the police department from releasing any type of information, photographs, even incident calls. This would fall underneath that, it has to do with a criminal investigation. So we don't release it unless we have a court order that tells us we have to release it. And we've been in Delaware County on several occasions fighting subpoenas from lawyers that request information that we are not allowed to release under penalty of law. I think it's a misdemeanor if we release information under CRIA that we shouldn't. So it's not a simple right-to-know, it's a little heightened standard under the CRIA Act, which is, you read together with the right-to-know.
So it sounds to me that the public is going to have very, very limited access to this information unless they get a court order to get that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. He just said what.
Any other questions? Sean, are you finished?
What does CRIA stand for again?
Criminal History Records Information Act.
Okay, any other comments from the commissioners? Can you, I, can you just, how is it worn? Do you wear it, like, what is it?
It's on their outermost garment. There's a couple of ways you can clip it on, so there's a, there's a magnetic clip, that actually, if I have my sweater on, it would go on the back of it, and it actually is very difficult to get off. They also have alligator clips for, if you have a leather jacket or something like that. So there's a variety of ways that they, they can get them on, and everything we've done through our research, they, they don't come off.
And is, and the staff there, is this, I'm guessing this enhances your ability to do police work and things like that, is this something that?
I would totally agree with that. It's just, what I alluded to before, it's greater accountability, holds everybody to a little bit of a higher standard. I believe, we had car cameras a long time ago, I believe everybody is on their best behavior. When they, when you know you're being recorded, we tell them when we come up, it's the first opportunity we can, let them know you're being recorded, and I think it just changes the dynamic of the interaction.
Those car cameras are pretty, pretty cool. They, when I went to my ride-along, had the opportunity to see them in action, so. All right, any other questions from the commissioners?
There are savings to be had on liability insurance?
That I don't know where, I don't believe so, but that's something we would certainly check into, Commissioner.
Is this 27,000 in the budget?
It's not in the budget, that's a pending board approval of the capital budget.
I thought we had, we had planned for this, that even the cameras were excluded from the, from the budget.
Yes, and I know we've had discussions probably over the last two to three years about the body cameras and going through the process of evaluating what's good, what's not, as the police department continues now to develop the policy that will mirror against state law as well as policy within the department of how all these items are handled, that have addressed a lot of the questions the board has asked.
When is the 27 expenditure going to occur? 27,000, is 27,000 right away, or is that after the grant?
That would be after the grant, we would need the grant as part of this.
I'd just like to add one more, one more thing, so, and we hear this a bunch, a bunch of times, that the police officers happen to have a lot of close calls where they may need to use force or not, and they've been able to handle a situation without using it. And I think that if this helps the police do their job and keeps everybody safe, and I'm hoping that the police are going to be welcoming this, but I think the, as you said, Sean, that this is really going to enhance transparency and hopefully, you know, we'll have just a better community, you know, interaction from, from both the citizens as well as the police. So I, I would support this.
Just as a brief example, we've had several complaints against police officers, and we've had the dash cam, and we've actually sat down with those residents to go through the dash cam, and from what the complaint has, actually, the residents have understood that, yeah, they saw it a different way, when you actually see it recorded, and it's also good for the officers too as well, that they're doing their job and then also it serves as a great training tool as well.
Okay, any additional commissioner comment? Any additional staff comment? Any public comment on this? I will go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-13, author, the authorization to apply for Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquencies Justice Assistance Grant under $10,000 initiative for the Radnor Township Police Department Body-Worn Camera Project, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Lieutenant Dietrich, we appreciate your being here and giving us the information. All right, Resolution 2019-14, authorization to apply for Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board Bureau of Alcohol Education's Reducing Underage Drinking and Dangerous Drinking Grant. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is this you again, Lieutenant Dietrich?
It is.
All right.
So this is a grant for a variety of things that we, that Sergeant Gluck actually found under the PLCB to combat, educate and combat underage drinking. Basically, what this grant will do, it'll give us a few extra tools, it'll give us a canopy that we can set up, and I know some of you attended the barbecue for the Villanova Kids down at the Home Properties of Brummar, we had a Dunkin' Donuts tent then, but we could have our own tent that they would pay for, that's almost $2,000. It would give us a high-end ID scanner. Right now, when we scan a license, a lot of times it will actually come back to a real, we have to, the bars have to be very careful because it scans to a real license, they don't always match it up. We'll have one of those, we'll get some DUI vision goggles, we'll have an opportunity to send officers to the annual conference, which is a training session somewhere in the state, and they'll be able to, the rest of the money, the rest of the $20,000 will go to funding overtime details to combat underage drinking.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioner comment on this?
What was the last one, overtime details to?
Overtime, so that we will spend the money for all those items, and then the rest of the grant will be to fund overtime details to combat underage drinking.
And what portion of the expenditure is that last, last one?
That would be the open one, so whatever the, approximately 12, 13,000?
Is this going to be geared more toward high school kids or college kids?
I think it would be geared towards any underage, any underage drinking.
I mean, is there a target that you have in mind?
Most of our underage drinking, I would suggest, would be in the, probably the college area. college area.
So is this in keeping with our many meetings that we had with Villanova and others, where we had police, and is this part of our, our meetings and, and the action steps that we talked about at those meetings, or is this something different?
This is something different. I would like this, I would like to believe it's in conjunction with it, they're really trying to combat it, make people good neighbors as best as they can, but we also know that it's, it's happening out there, too.
Is there any different reporting, or is there any interplay with the Villanova Police Department from this program, either in the training or in the implementation and apprehension of any, anybody that would be apprehended as a part of this?
At this point, this is our program.
It would be for colleges in general. I wouldn't think that you'd-
Yeah, we're not targeting Villanova, we're not, it would be for all colleges and all underage violations.
And, but Villanova's police is the only one, they don't, they're the only one that has a police force, so that's why I was referring to, if there was any coordination with that group as well, that was my question.
Okay. At this point, this is just strictly our grant to go out and enforce on our, our terms.
Okay, any other commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment on Resolution 2019-14? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-14, authorizing, authorization to apply for Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board Bureau of Alcohol Education's Reducing Underage Drinking and Dangerous Drinking Grant, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. All right, 2019, Resolution 2019-09, Authorization to Purchase Capital Vehicles and Equipment, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Nocini, Mr. McNallys, who's taking this one?
That would be me, Madam Commissioner. All these items are in the, the board adopted final comprehensive budget. It's under the capital plan in the Public Works and Vehicle and Equipment section. It's all been voted on.
Any commissioner comment on this? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-09, Authorization to Purchase, I'm sorry, did you have some, a comment?
Is this in conformity with the resolution that you all just passed?
Mr. McNallys, I think these vehicles are-
One of them is a hybrid, I thought.
These were, these were budgeted items, this is a budgeted item.
To know if it's a hybrid.
He wants to know if they're-
But one of them is a hybrid.
Yeah, one of them is a hybrid.
So, we're getting there. We're not there all at once, but we're making progress.
Baby steps, Rich, baby steps. Okay.
Voted against that resolution.
Oh my gosh, this is too funny.
All those in favor of, at least we can laugh about it, right? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-09, Authorization to Purchase Capital Vehicles and Equipment, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Resolution 2019-05, 521, 525 South Roberts Road, Final Lot Line Adjustment. Mr. Nocini?
Madam President, the applicant is here. This is for final, he was before you during caucus. I really think just about everything was stepped through, so now it would be time to see if the board wishes to approve this. It's just basically the changing of a lot line between two lots.
Before we discuss, can I get a resolution to approve? I mean, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bloomfield, do you want to speak?
Good evening, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Paul Bloomfield. I live at 521 South Roberts, and the motion for you is to, the resolution to change the lot line from its existing position to transfer this triangulated portion from Lot A to Lot B. So, the only thing that's happened since the last time I was here was that we got the feedback from the Delaware County Planning Commission recommending approval.
A question for John Rice. John, this lot line change, there are two properties involved. This isn't an interior, or somebody owns the whole thing. Can only one of the owners be accede to this, or do we need both?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we're clean.
Well, and there's a qualification that there would have to be something recorded, obviously, that would be signed by all parties, so that's part of the, there's a signatory block on the, on the drawing here anticipating that approval from both.
Yeah, all the property owners will have to sign it in the board.
Just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Bloomfield, so there's two lots now, and there's going to be two lots when this is done?
Yes.
Okay, it's not going from two lots to three lots, I just want to echo Commissioner Nagel's point, so it's not a subdivision.
The combined total is 2.6 acres, this can't be anything but two lots.
I just want to, that it's not some kind of de facto subdivision.
So what is the gray area showing this? Again, the existing, shows the existing, the change in the lot lines and-
Lot B is my lot, and it's going to grow to this extent, to that shaded area is now part of Lot A, and that's going to become part of Lot B.
And who owns Lot A? You own both?
No. The owner of Lot A is Vincent Falcone and Scott Borer.
Vincent Falcone, is that no relation?
So you can vote for it.
Is there, is there a, is there, I assume that you're paying for that additional land, right?
I have an understanding with the owner of the other property.
So is there, and I asked this at caucus, what is the plan for development? It seems like, is there going to be a development as a result of this? And if so, I mean, just talk about what it is, we just want to be aware of what, what the plans are.
Not in the short term. You can see the, the building setback is difficult here because it's an internal lot, so there's an 84-foot setback. So by changing this lot line, it does alter the buildable area of Lot B. So my existing house is here, and the building setback line proposed would come to this location, so it does allow for future expansion of the house, which right now is really up against the setback line.
Does it allow for further subdivision or not?
No, no. And in fact, nothing can be built in this shaded area at any point. The setback, as I say, is 84 feet from that property line, so this proposed setback is still fully within Lot B, and there's no new development of any, any structure within that shaded area. It's just a future possibility that my home could grow and get larger.
Do you have any plans for the, to expand the house?
I'm an architect, I make plans all the time, but I don't have any short-term plans to do anything with this house.
How about long-term? Do you have plans?
I may expand my house, I may put an addition on my house someday.
Again, I just, I mean-
I may put an addition on your house someday.
Perhaps, but in this case, how big is the current house?
The footprint is 2,000 square feet or so. It's a two-story, two-and-a-half-story house.
Okay, so I, my assumption is that you, you do plan on expanding the, the house at some point in the future, and would that be accurate?
I could do it the way it is, or the way it's proposed. Lot A could expand, now we're in the future. The question is whether or not this property is part of Lot A or part of Lot B. So that would have ramifications for both, obviously, and one would be able to expand more so than the other if we transfer it. Right now, it's the opposite, but yes.
Maybe the question he's asking is, yeah, I know, well, let me ask a follow-up then. Is not having this done, is that preventing you from an expansion? Okay, so you could either way, okay.
This would allow it to be done more easily because of the, the layout and the topography of my property.
Any other comment? Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Is there any public comment? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-05, 521, 525 South Roberts Road, Final Lot Line Adjustment, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Thank you, Mr. Bloomfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got 106 Harvard Lane. What does GP stand for?
A grading permit.
Oh, thank you. Grading permit. 19-010, Requesting a Waiver from Section 245-22A to C2, Minimum Infiltration Requirement. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Nocini?
Thank you, Madam President. So the applicant's engineers here insured in the Woodland subdivision, Lot 45, which is the noted grading permit application, their infiltration testing indicated that ground levels would not support infiltration. As we've discussed in the past, when that occurs, they are required to come to the Board of Commissioners. Their engineer, Patrick Spelman, is here to go over that with you, and they, when the infiltration does not work, they are required to come to this board to ask for a waiver on that item, and in this case, the applicant is proposing to construct two rain gardens for volume and control and water quality, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Spelman.
Good evening. Christie Flynn, Representative of Rockwell, planned on being here at the original meeting date. When it got rescheduled, there was a conflict, so she regrettably could not be here tonight. As Mr. Nocini said, we're talking about 106 Harvard, which is this lot on Harvard Lane, which comes out to Bryn Mawr Avenue next to the Sacred Heart School. Four, there's 14 lots on Harvard Lane. One of them was built in the 90s, six of them are under permit now and in various stages of construction, two are under review. This is one of those applications that is under review. So for 106, what we are proposing to do, as Mr. Nocini said, we did infiltration testing here, Hillbake Engineering did the infiltration testing, and the site did not meet the criteria, the DEP's criteria for infiltration, which means we had to come up with other means of addressing water quality. What we've done here, as we've done in the past on the street and elsewhere, is we've developed rain gardens on the property with a needy underneath of it that's in accordance with the DEP's managed release concept, which is the BMP they develop for sites that cannot infiltrate. So what we are doing here, I will flip to the basin, the dark gray area here of the lot, on this drainage map insert, is everything that's going to the rain garden. So we're capturing pretty much all the developed area on the property. The two-year volume of runoff gets captured in the rain garden below the riser invert, has to go through a foot and a half, excuse me, four and a half feet of a, of a media compost material, then into an underdrain, and here's the whole point of the concept, the slow release. There then is a half-inch orifice at the end of this drain, which slows the water down, increases the contact time to help with the water quality, release, excuse me, remove the pollutants, nitrogen, nitrates, phosphates, total suspended solids. So by having a small orifice, it gives the water time to have the contact it needs to meet the water quality, and then is slowly released. The, the rain gardens, also designed for higher storms, would go through the, the riser and would control the peak rate to, to township standards. I think that's a good overview.
Is this an improvement over existing conditions?
Sorry, say that again, please.
Is this an improvement in stormwater flow over existing conditions?
Yeah, so we're, we're in the Darby Creek Release District B2. What this winds up requiring us to do is reduce the peak charge, peak discharge from the 50-year storm down to the 10-year storm. So right now, in a, at a 50-year storm, so much water is running off of this site, this undeveloped site. When we're done here, the amount of water that will be running off is, is equal to the 10-year storm. You know, maybe, I don't know the, I don't remember the exact numbers, but maybe under existing conditions, we're getting five CFS out of 50-year storm, and then under the proposed conditions, with the rain gardens in place, we're down to two or three CFS.
And Steve Nocini, do you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Jump in here. So are they trying to put an addition? Is this?
Oh, this is a, I'm sorry, this is a, it's a brand-new house, so this is an undeveloped lot.
Okay, construction, okay. I mean, if you go back, that picture right there, it just looks like the whole front yard and backyard is going to be a rain garden, correct? Which, so my, my opinion is, if that's the case, then it doesn't look like that lot can handle it. That would be my just initial instinct, that the majority of that lot is either a house or a rain garden.
Well, this is part of the lot down here, it's undeveloped, down, down in this corner, with the stream coming through it. Also, remember, this is a density modification, a part of a density modification, so the lots were developed smaller on the assumption that they're, I'm sorry, this doesn't really show it, but this entire area is surrounded by open space. So the idea of the density modification was that you took, you clustered your development in a smaller area, that you would have what would seemingly look like a higher density, but once you take in account the, the open space around it, it's, it is not that, that higher density.
So what's, what's on that lot? So there's nothing there, or is there a house that you're going to knock down?
There is nothing here right now.
Okay, so on all that Harvard Lane, is that like a subdivision? So there's nothing, there's only one house?
Correct, so this was subdivided in the 70s, part of the Woodlands, too. Nope, the only person who built was in the 90s here.
Okay.
That, that Rockwell came along and started developing these lots.
Okay, so would all of the new development, in theory, be, have the same access or the same rights? I guess that question is to Steve Nocini.
The houses are, there are-
Because they're going to be that close, are they all going to have to pretty much have that, a rain garden in their front yard and their backyard to be?
No, there are a number of other lots that have, have perked and were able to infiltrate and didn't have to come before this board. This one is not infiltrated.
So out of those lots, how many perk and how many don't?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
I'm, I'm just curious, the, the condition-
More than not, more than not. Since this is the first one on Harvard that you've seen, so, and there's been five or six at least that have been-
Six grading permit applications for this. So you're not setting any precedent, Commissioner? This is always a case-by-case basis, based on the testing?
You know, it is, and then, you know, what, when you don't look at the, the broader picture, and you look at each lot individually, before you know it, it's either rain gardens or concrete, and then it's all going to flow into a river, and I don't know what the absorption level is going to be, but if it's not what we thought it's going to be, then you're going to have massive flooding. We already have a problem with flooding in general.
Here, here's the thing. We have an infiltration requirement for land development. We, this board has continually issued waivers for the infiltration requirement, exacerbating existing stormwater problems. I would argue, and I think experts agree with me, that the continued waiver of the infiltration requirement for stormwater causes more flooding than any 250 of the past years of coal use in, in the United States. The issue that we have is the infiltration requirement. If we are not going to enforce it, we should change the rule for everyone so that you don't have to come before the board for a waiver. I invited to my show, The Rich Booker Show, Real Local News and Political Talk on Radnor Studio 21-
Get that plug in, Rich.
I, I had that, it's on Tuesdays, Tuesday evenings. If, I, I invited Ms., the Delaware Riverkeeper, Maya Van Rossum, and we talked about this very issue. The point is, although the flow is slowed for a 50-year, when we have larger storms, this exacerbates flooding, this does not reduce flooding. To reduce flooding, we need to keep the stormwater on the site. This does not keep any of the more stormwater on the site. This allows the stormwater to go at a slower pace up to a 50-year storm. When we have the larger storm events, this is overwhelmed, this causes the flooding. We have done, since I've been on the board, tens or a hundred or more waivers of the infiltration requirement for every project that's come before the board. This is causing flooding in Radnor- that's come before the board. This is causing flooding in Radnor. The waivers are causing the flooding. This is not a matter of getting electric lawn mowers for the public works. Just not, that's not what the issue is. Waivers are the issue. We shouldn't grant waivers. If we're going to grant a waiver, then we should change the law and eliminate the infiltration requirement and give everybody a waiver. This is bad practice. I say it every time and again. Maya Van Rossum agreed with me. This causes additional flooding. We should not do these waivers.
So for items H and J, you'll say, you'll just say ditto for those two, right? Weren't we going to do this administratively? Where's that at? I hate to ask, but you know-
We can't do it administratively. We have to grant the waiver. We have to change the rule. Let's change the rule. Propose that.
Rich, this is what, I did propose it. I thought, weren't we going to amend the ordinance so this could be done as part of the grading permit process?
We're going to have to amend the ordinance and set up a system where the engineers review these infiltration requirements and whatever other waivers are involved. It's not always infiltration, correct? Is it?
Correct.
The issue I'm referring to is the infiltration waiver. That's the waiver that I'm objecting to every time this comes before the board, which is every meeting practically.
Right, and we always grant it. So I'd rather have the engineers look at this rather than us. And, you know, I trust their opinion a lot more than ours. No offense to anybody up here. That includes me.
I don't, but we should, we should, we should change, we should change. I'm elected to provide my opinion, so I, my opinion means the most. But what I would say is this. We should change the rule for everybody. If you're going to do it administratively and turn it over to the engineers, let everybody have the benefit of it. Get rid of the infiltration requirement.
But then you'll lose, you'll lose the properties it can infiltrate.
Okay, well then-
Which is many more than the ones it can.
Well, that's, that's, that's the choice this board has to make. Wasn't this board that implemented the infiltration requirement. It was prior boards. I may not have voted for it. But the point is, this board voted for it. It is the law. We should not abrogate it every time somebody comes up. It does cause the flooding in the large storm events. It's not about using coal for the last 250 years from, from the Pocono Mountains floating down to our area. This is about waivers. This is what's causing the problem. Keeping stormwater on the sites will eliminate flooding, reduce flooding, not granting waivers.
Okay, well, right now, we do have this on the books, so we do need to, we do need to deal with this. So if we-
I would also point out that this is currently undeveloped land, and the water, there is no control on rain falling on these properties. And it doesn't all-
There's no impervious, John.
Rick, you continue to demonstrate your lack of understanding.
Gentlemen.
It's impervious, the grass, the trees, the plants absorb more than that paving and that concrete will.
A grass field with a heavy storm might as well be asphalt. It runs off completely. And if you don't believe me-
It's not, it's not asphalt. It's not grass. It's not asphalt.
All right, gentlemen, we don't need to argue over this. All right. So I think that Commissioner Larkin, at the top of this, didn't you ask, does this improve, this improves the prop, this improves the stormwater, this improves the property?
What do you mean improve? Define improve. It does not improve the, it releases just the same amount of water. It releases more water than the undeveloped land does.
No, that's not correct.
It does. It releases more water, because now you have impervious surface.
That is not correct. We were told it-
He, you're not asking the right question. He's telling you the answer that he can straight-faced tell you. This causes more flooding. There is impervious where there isn't today, and this will cause more flooding.
Why don't we stop talking for a second? I'll rephrase my question, because I'm pretty confident that you did understand me. In the post-construction development conditions with the impervious, is the off-flow from the site going to increase or decrease from the current meadow conditions?
Decrease.
By how much?
I'd have to look up the storm before-
It won't decrease. It decreases over time. It'd be the same amount.
I guess we need to discuss whether we're talking about peak rate flow or volume. So-
So my main interest is volume.
Yes. So for volume, this would not wind up decreasing the volume that comes off this site. What it winds up doing is making that volume come off the site in a much more prolonged period, so that the stream would then have the capacity to handle that flow, which is coming at it slower.
Okay, and what about peak rate?
Peak rate it controls. So we are slowing, as I said, we are slowing the post-condition for the 50-year storm in this particular release district to the 10-year storm.
And what does our ordinance govern?
That is required by the ordinance for the B2 release district.
So do any of our engineers disagree with what he just said?
Nobody disagrees with it. The point is, in storms that are greater than 50 years, and the point is, the infiltration requirement is designed to keep stormwater on the site. That's why we require it. By doing these rain gardens and doing these waivers, we, by volume, allow the same amount of, same amount of water off the site or greater. There's greater volume coming off, because there's a lot of paving and concrete and roof.
If I may, that, the infiltration requirement assumes that there is infiltration on the site already. So since the site, for intensive purposes, failed infiltration, there's just as much water coming off. There's, there is the initial abstraction difference between asphalt and a wooded property. So I have to take that into account.
So you're saying that a wooded property is-
Rich, can you let him finish, please?
Well, no, you just glossed over that. You just glossed over that. So you're saying, what'd you say, the abstraction rate for the wooded property versus asphalt?
The initial abstraction rate. But as you get into your higher flow, rainstorms, that becomes less and less significant. So it's significant for the lower rainstorms, which, again, we are then, we are creating our own initial abstraction, in effect, by slowing the water down with this managed release concept. Not quite that straightforward, but it's the best I can explain it.
So because the property doesn't infiltrate, to begin with, you creating these rain gardens is assisting with the infiltration?
I can't say it's assisting with the infiltration.
It doesn't perk.
Because, yes, I can't say that. It's slowing, so the water is coming off the property slower than it is now. It's the best we can do with this property.
And if we don't approve the waiver, what is the option?
I can't think of any options.
Well, so John said it'll be in court.
You can't build one.
Again, if, why do we grant waivers? We should change the law so you don't need to worry about infiltration. Give everybody the advantage. If it can't be done, change the law. That's what I'm saying to you folks. The law is the law. We didn't put it in there. I didn't do it. I didn't vote for it. I may not have voted for it. But granting the waivers is making things worse. We shouldn't grant them. And Jack, you should be the one that should be the champion of this. This is affecting flooding, especially for the storms that are over 50 years.
That makes no sense. So you're saying we should change the law?
So you're saying that putting that out there, it's, you make no sense. Putting a house and paving on there, it's just, it's better. It's better now. The stormwater's better. Let's pave over the entire township.
You didn't let me finish my question.
I did.
No, I don't think you did. So can I finish my question?
No.
I don't need you to mansplain. I don't need you to mansplain it to me, Rich.
I'm telling you, the waiver is the wrong way to go. You're increasing flow in the larger storms. You're not changing the volume. This is exacerbating our stormwater flooding problem. You grant them every time. All I'm saying is, give everybody the benefit. Don't make anybody come before us.
I'm going to move that we close debate. Second that motion.
All right. All those in favor of closing debate?
No, we have comment on closing debate. And we need that public comment.
Don't comment on ancillary motions.
Yeah. All those in favor of closing debate?
No, 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 no.
In the case by saying aye.
I don't want to close debate. It's not closed debate.
Motion passes. We are closing debate. Is there any, staff comment on this? Mr. Nocini? Is there any public comment on this? All right, I'll call the vote. All those-
No, wait, wait.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Roberta.
Roberta Winters, 326 Williams Road. I appreciate our concern for stormwater. I also appreciate the concern for providing waivers and variances and things like that. I think my concern, having seen rain gardens, I would hope that there will be some monitoring of those rain gardens so that they remain functional and those small openings that are supposed to exist do not become clogged. So I think with waivers such as this, we need some monitoring to make sure that those remedial practices, in fact, remain operational. Thank you.
We don't have that. Homeowners are responsible to keep these up themselves, and we're not checking that.
Okay, I will call the vote. All those in favor of 106 Harvard Lane, grading permit 19010, requesting a waiver from Section 245-22A to C2, minimum infiltration requirement, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5 to 2. Thank you for being here.
This is what causes our stormwater fee. This is what, we're not managing stormwater. This is what's doing it.
Can you let me introduce the next thing, and you can say it there?
I'll say, I'm going to say the same thing.
527 Roberts Road, requesting a waiver from Storm Water Management Ordinance. May I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Mr. Nocini?
Thank you, Madam President. Our mics don't work, but I can speak loudly. So this applicant had an approved grading permit in 2017. At that time, the property was able to infiltrate and met the requirements of the county. During construction of one of the systems on the lot, groundwater was encountered, basically making it totally ineffective. Groundwater was counted up to three or four feet, making infiltration a moot point. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the County Storm Water Management, groundwater recharge and rate control. The applicant is adjusting 20 trees on the site in lieu of this. And I will turn it over to the applicant's engineer, who will take me to the finer point.
Good evening. My name is Dennis O'Neil. I'm with Herbert McComby's office. The site on Roberts Road that we're talking about is a flag lot from Roberts Road. Most of the development is taking place to the rear of the lot, a new home, garage, driveway, significant portion of the development in impervious cover. There's a high point in the driveway in the flag, approximately where I have my pointer. And it drains, from that point, it drains to the back of the lot. And then, from the driveway, from that point to Roberts Road. So in order to help alleviate that area of driveway draining to Roberts Road, we designed two infiltration systems. We designed an infiltration system on the main part of the lot that picks up the driveway, the house, and all of the impervious to the main development, and a system down off of the site in an easement that was granted by the owners of 525 Roberts Road to put a system in. We did perk the site, as was indicated. A year later, when they went to build it, they dug the trench and they found high groundwater table in there, and obvious signs of perching in the soils that weren't there when the soil test was done, a year and a half before the construction. I'd also like to point out that the bed in the back far exceeds the requirements for that drainage area, and will compensate for the reduction in retained infiltration for the net two-year storm. So if you were to look at the site overall, there will still be a net two-year reduction in infiltration runoff from the site because of what's being captured in this back basin. This basin was capturing an area that can't be released to that area, but this area was overcompensating for additional area. In order to make it so that we maintain and infiltrate up to the 100-year storm in that basin, that's how, that's why it's overcompensating.
Any commissioner comment on this? I hesitate to-
I have some comments, but I'll let anybody else go first if they'd like.
I think I already heard you say it, but just to confirm, you're saying that as developed, this will result in lower peak rate flow off of the property?
Lower peak rate flow and volume.
Perfect. Thank you. Ask, is there any disagreement from our engineers?
Thank you.
So what happens in 100-year storm that's above peak rate?
No, in 100-year storm, it's at peak rate. Peak rate matches peak rate in 100-year storm.
So it doesn't help in that instance?
It does. It detains, it's already reducing volume by 1,200 cubic feet. So you're taking the 1,200 cubic feet of volume out of the regime, no matter what the storm is.
So it is, where is it perk? Where is it percolation actually working then in the infiltration?
In this basin back here. And that basin-
You're saying that that's oversized to produce that, but that that can't pick up the area of the driveway for the flag lot?
It can't, because this area drains down towards Roberts Road. This is a high point on the, on the site. All of this area drains to the back of the lot. So we're not able to get this stormwater from here, over top of this hill, and back down the other side.
So you need a waiver for that portion, which, you're not decreasing the flow from the driveway portion?
That's correct.
So if you look at the site in different sections, you are complying with one, you're not complying with the other. So the fact of it is, we collect, and we have collected about $4 million in stormwater fees from the constituents. The stormwater fee is supposedly to manage stormwater, but yet we continue to grant waivers which exacerbate stormwater problems, which Mr. Larkin proposes, that we spend three-quarters, he said 2.4 million of the $4 million that we've collected, he plans to spend in his areas to address stormwater. Yet, he continues to provide waivers from the stormwater infiltration requirement, thereby increasing flooding. Again, if we're going to grant waivers, everyone should get a waiver. This is making stormwater worse. This is, we're collecting money, which Jack proposes to use in his area only, no place else, none in mine at least.
That's not true.
It is true.
That is completely false, and you know it.
No, it's, it's, this is for-
Could I ask a real technical question of this gentleman?
Well, I offered you a chance to say beforehand.
You don't get that right, Rick.
I do, I said, make your case.
Commissioner Nagel, please, ask your question.
Be civil. Roberta, talk to him about civility, would you?
That area is currently a driveway. Are you increasing the impervious surface in this area?
We are, yes.
How much? What, widening the driveway?
Currently is not a driveway.
Oh, you're going to come in the-
We're going to build a driveway.
Separate driveway, okay. That's what I wanted to know.
The site that has no access, it's not developed.
So that's, that's a totally vacant lot over there, right?
It's totally vacant.
And it's up the hill?
All the way up top.
Yeah. But then, so where are you going to plant the trees? Because that's a whole, that's a hill, that whole thing is a hill there. And there's already been trees-
Pretty heavily treed right now.
Well, there's trees that have fallen down over there. I've gotten, there's some people who are not happy with that condition of that lot. I'll just let you know, right now.
Thank you. I will take that back to the-
Yeah. Where are the trees, where are you planning on planting the trees?
There are a number of trees that are being planted around the driveway and around the new portion of the parking area for the house. We cannot plant trees in this strip of land, because this strip of land is an easement. It's a utility easement that would allow for the future extension of utilities to the two lots behind this lot and to 525. The reason that this basin isn't, isn't in this leg, which was originally, was designed that way, was because it was determined by the township that this utility easement didn't include stormwater as a utility. So in order to be able to extend sewer water, gas, or electric through that 25-foot leg, it had to be left open. And that's why we're not putting trees in that, in that strip of land.
Which makes perfect sense. This project, like the prior, is undeveloped property with new impervious going in, requesting a waiver. This hurts our stormwater problem. Say it 100 times. Every one of these waivers exacerbates the flooding that is- say it 100 times. Every one of these waivers exacerbates the flooding that is in your neighborhood and the money that you're collecting that you want to spend. We should not offer, we should not do these waivers, or we should offer it to everyone and forego this, the whole stormwater, and let everyone deal with it.
So, I got a question, and I missed some of it, so my apologies. So, the basin in the back, that's going to, yep, what's the size on that, and how, the dimensions, and how deep is it?
This basin is...
Talk to the mic, please, I can't hear you.
That basin is 10 foot by 65 foot by 81 inches deep.
Okay. So, I guess, I guess my question is, is the owner gonna be allowed to fill it in? What, what guarantees do we have that it's gonna maintain its original use?
This basin, the rear basin, it's subsurface basin.
What's, what's subsurface?
It's underground.
Pardon?
It's put...
Okay.
Right.
And we require, for, there is a stormwater management made agreement that, that, that there is law with this property in perpetuity with the deed that says the system has to stay there. If there is an issue, township has the right to inspect. That's with all stormwater management. Like, if this is fully underground, you don't see it, it's quite...
Okay, so, and I know that area a little bit. Where's that relative to Eithan Avenue? How far is it?
It's right up the hill.
What's, what's up the hill, 500 feet, what?
It would be, yeah.
200 feet?
Right.
So, so all that, so is that additional water, or is that gonna shoot into the creek? Because that does flood, I mean, I take Eithan every day, that does flood fairly often by the hill school, correct?
Both of these areas eventually drain to Eithan.
Okay, but before they do, when Eithan, I mean, I've seen Eithan get very, very violent, to the point where I put on my Facebook page a manhole cover coming off because we had too much rain.
That was further up?
Well, it's, I mean, it's all within a quarter mile from, from that area, so...
If I might, Commissioner, the purpose of the rate control in this area, and I think the last gentleman was trying to explain, the 50 to the 10, the reason that they do that is because they want that peak of Eithan to pass before this starts releasing water.
Sure, that's all, yes, that's all, I get that.
And that's why these peaks are staggered, so that this basin holds that water. These are very large basins, 81 inches deep. This basin has a 64-inch or 60-inch diameter storage pipe inside of it, so it can hold the water and then release it after that initial peak of, of rainwater has passed. And that's the purpose of detention.
Sure.
Not retention.
So, the property owner is gonna be responsible for upkeeping that, is that correct?
They are, yes.
Okay, and if that happens where it gets clogged, or they don't do it, you're saying the township can inspect, am I correct?
Yes.
Steve, okay. But what, you know, what can we do if, you know, basically, now it's out of compliance, we have to wait?
Township has the right to go in, get the proper notification, make said repairs to the basement, and then go after that resident.
And what's that timeframe, weeks, months? I mean, I mean, how long does that, I'm dealing with one issue on Garrett Avenue, which has been going on for two years, how quickly can you go in and rectify that?
You'd have to be notified of an issue.
Sure.
Right, and then we would inspect. If we determine there was an issue, we'd refer to the solicitor, we'd contact the resident. I, I don't really...
I mean, you're looking at weeks, or months, or six months?
The resident could say upfront, I'm not doing anything.
Sure.
And then we could move. The resident might take some time and maybe not decide, so I can't, that's hypothetical. I can tell you, we could be ready to go in to make a repair very quick.
Okay.
And then you either bill them or put a lien on their house, correct? Right.
Okay.
So, any other comment on this? Any staff comment? Any public comment?
Hi, my name is Lloyd Goodman, I have a property on King of Prussia Road in Radnor. My question, sir, are you saying at this high point here, this driveway, this water's gonna go right down the driveway onto Roberts?
Yes, it is.
And do you have any inlets along here right now?
We do not. We, we're proposing one to take it into the basin.
Yeah, so you could put maybe an inlet at the end of the driveway and pipe it to the rear, to the basin?
It'd have to be pumped, we couldn't pipe it to the rear.
You can't dig it?
There is, um, 40, about 45, 50 feet of elevation change.
Oh, okay.
On the street to the back.
All right, that'd be pretty deep. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Wait, I'll call the votes. All those in favor of the granting a waiver from Stormwater Management Ordinance for 527 Roberts Road, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Those of us saving the stormwater at Radnor versus those who are contributing to flooding.
Thank you for that editorial comment.
Quite welcome.
Madam President, if I may, just to add a couple points to the stormwater issue is, as I know the board knows, we have a lot of projects that have, that are on the boards that have not been funded yet, so there are plenty of projects sitting there that we can improve the stormwater within this township. Also, too, with development comes improvement with stormwater management than undeveloped property. So, I think these developments, I think hearing these things out, weighing the benefits from that is, is also very good, but development helps stormwater management, and I think any engineer will confirm that development helps stormwater management.
And again, I would push back and say, development exacerbates stormwater problems, it has to, otherwise we wouldn't have any flooding.
Well, if that's the case...
All right, gentlemen, we still...
The engineers, the engineers are of invested interest.
Gentlemen, we do not need to argue this point, please, gentlemen.
I just want to make the point that we should speak factually on this, and stormwater does not.
We should.
And I think that's what the facts are, development does help with that.
Development does not, does not decrease stormwater, does not.
Okay, everyone has made their points, I think that we've, everyone has made their points, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item I, Resolution 2019-15, accepting a deed of dedication for the sanitary sewer line to 747 Conestoga Road. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, Mr. Nocini, is this you as well?
Yes, I, Madam President, so this is a, an easier one. So, a developer had a single lot where the system failed.
Well, hold on, Steve, the, you wanna come up and use this mic right here? I, I don't know if they can hear you on TV or not.
I think Ian's there, is Ian fixing it? There he is, I thought I saw him.
So, a developer at 747 Conestoga Road developed a single lot, the on-site system had failed, so with that, came to the township to do a main extension. So, at, fully at his cost, the sanitary sewer main was extended to this, this house on Fox River, fully funded by the developer, inspections by QCI, also paid for by the developer, as well as our legal fees. So, once a main extension is installed, inspected, and approved, from that standpoint, the requirement is for that main extension to be dedicated to the township, so it becomes, officially becomes part of our system for us to operate and maintain and give the wish to have other people connected.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, so the developer of 747 Conestoga Road had a system... His request is that the Board of Commissioners accept dedication of the sanitary sewer line, so it officially becomes part of the township sewer system for us to maintain and possibly use for future connection. There is no fiscal impact to township for this dedication.
Okay. Any commissioner comment on this? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-15, accepting a deed of dedication for the sanitary sewer line to 747 Conestoga Road, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing, with Commissioner Larkin off the dais. 820 Darby Paley Road, grading permit 19-001, requesting a waiver from Section 245-22A to C2, minimum infiltration requirement. Mr. Nocini?
Thank you, Madam President. So, this is another requirement, the site did not pass infiltration requirements, and so by our ordinance, the applicant is required to come to this board to reflect a waiver. Tonight, we have the applicant's engineer here to go through the details of that.
Okay, first, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
May I get a second? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Brian Madsen from Momney. We're the civil engineers for the project. A grading permit application has been submitted to the township, including a proposal to tear down the existing residence and to construct a new single-family residence. Stormwater infiltration has been tested on-site and found that infiltration is not feasible on-site. We're looking at the existing conditions plan here. Darby Paley Road is on the high side of the site, it drains towards the back of the property. The house that's in place now has a sand mound in the backyard due to the poor percolation of soils. So, the proposed plan includes a new driveway and with the new house, the stormwater management facilities are provided to provide the peak rate control requirements. So, we have an underground pipe system in the front yard to provide the peak rate control requirements, and draining to the back, there are two rain gardens in the back to provide the required water quality volume. And runoff in excess of the rain gardens will drain to a level spreader that will drain into the backyard.
That property's right on Darby Creek, right?
Yes, it is. So, this, this red line that you see here is the 100-year floodplain delineation, and off the property line to the back is Darby Creek.
Uh huh.
And this project is also in the B2 Darby Creek Watershed District, which requires the 50 to the 10 peak rate control reduction.
And you guys are a shade tree, so you're planting a whole bunch of trees there, or you're taking some down and planting new ones?
Yes, so, there are a decent amount of trees that are being planted on-site. There are six red maples in the front, another red maple here, and a series of evergreen trees along the side yard.
Does anyone have any comments?
What happened to the sand mound? Is there still septic, or are they connecting to the sanitary sewer?
They're connecting to the sanitary. Right now, there's sanitary, the public sewer extends, can't really see it on this sheet, but there's a, the public sewer currently ends here. The proposal includes an extension of the sanitary line onto their property to allow them to connect to the public sewer.
Now, in this case, the sand mound indicates that it did perk for purposes of the septic in past years.
Sand mounds are used when infiltration doesn't allow infiltration. So, the sand mound is built up above the existing grades in cases where infiltration isn't, isn't feasible.
Did that reduce any, how long was that sand mound in place? Do you know, how many years?
I believe the original house is from the 50s. I'm not exactly sure.
What's the finished grade at the 100-year flood location of the Darby Creek versus the grades in that, in that basin? What's the elevation?
The elevation of the 100-year storm is roughly 208. We have, the bottom of our rain garden is at 211. So, we allow the water to fill up in the rain garden about nine inches to this riser before it spills out to the spreader.
So, isn't it a concern to have the floodplain so close to your stormwater area? If we get a catastrophic storm, a lot of people say that global warming is gonna, causing a lot of storms and, and flooding, so won't we have the creek right in there in that basin?
Well, we're, we're about three feet above the, above the floodplain.
So, it could happen, but you don't think it's likely?
I wouldn't expect it to happen.
So, we need a waiver from the infiltration?
Yes, correct.
What is the... There's no area that would perk in there at all to reduce the volume of water coming off of that site?
No.
In the front? Look at that big, one of the comments of this shade tree was that big driveway, the big circular driveway, a lot of pavement right there.
All right, we tried testing in the front. The, the soil report showed clay-wet soils throughout the, throughout the profile of, of the hole. The test revealed, you know, zero, zero infiltration throughout the, throughout the profile of the test.
All right, well, you know, again, I, I am supportive of all of these developers doing, and these people building their houses. I'm not supportive of our current ordinance, which prohibits you from doing so, but I'm bound by that. So, my view is, is that I, I can't justify granting waivers because we are not decreasing the flow of water off the site, and we are exacerbating our stormwater problems that we have in Wayne. So, I, I appreciate the efforts that they're doing, but believe that this is, is not helpful, and I think bears that out.
This is a tear-down, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so what is the existing size now, and what, what will it be? Just on the house, just on the house?
Yeah, the existing house is, well, it's here, the existing house is roughly 1,800 square feet.
Okay.
A footprint, the proposed house is about 3,600.
So, so it's approximately, the permeable's gonna be double?
Right, so, well, the net increase in impervious across the site is about 3,500 square feet.
Okay.
Thirty six, yeah.
And then the driveway, has that increased as well?
Yes.
Okay, and what, what has that increased?
Well, the driveway is increasing from about 2,000 square feet to about 4,000 square feet.
Okay, so the net would be, if I'm right, 3,800 square feet?
The, the total existing impervious is about 5,380 square feet.
Okay.
Total proposed impervious is 8,680, so it's roughly a 3,500 square foot increase.
Okay. And currently, right now, does the basement flood? Because it...
I'm not personally aware.
You don't know, you don't know if, if there is a point where there's extreme saturation?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
There's, there's one thing, if I may interrupt, so you have a house built in the 50s with zero stormwater management, and now, albeit that we can't, that the applicant can't meet the infiltration rates, you're gonna have a new home that does have stormwater management. So, that's kind of what the manager was talking about, in going from a home with zero, albeit with more impervious, but now there is some form of stormwater management.
With that stormwater management, that won't change the, the chemical compound of the soil, correct? Or will it over time, or not?
No, sir.
So, so if it's not perking, then it will still not perk, correct?
That's correct. I mean, they're, they're doing, so, there's soil media for the rain gardens, but not the entire lot.
So, I guess just for the sake of symmetry, I think I can infer from what you all are saying...
saying, but I've asked everybody else, so I'll ask you guys as well. My understanding is that in the post-development conditions, this site will have lower peak rate flow than in the pre-developed conditions?
Correct, yes.
What about volume?
Volume, there will not be a decrease in volume.
Okay, any material change in volume of runoff?
Based on the two-year increase, the proposed site increases the volume by about 400 cubic feet of water during a two-year storm.
Thank you.
This has been a dilapidated house that's been there for, I don't know how long, with a accompanying car that's been there for years. So I think that, you know, this, it looks like a very nice step in development and I think it certainly will be welcomed by the neighbors who are, who live over there.
Any other comments? Or do you have anything new to say?
Just the spark of understanding that I saw in Jack's face right there. This does increase volume. Again, I'm supportive of Momney and developer. Our ordinance, I would urge all of you who grant all these waivers to change the ordinance and give everybody an even playing field. Don't make anybody do it. Don't pick and choose which ones you want. That's all I'm saying. I'm for the folks here to do what they want on their land, but it's not the law that I made and my obligation is to uphold what we've done.
Any additional comment? Is there any staff comment? Any public comment? All those in favor of granting a waiver, a grading waiver from Section 245 22A to C2, minimum infiltration requirement for 820 Darby Paley Road grading permit 19-001, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to two.
Thank you.
I'm keeping track of all these waivers, by the way.
Okay.
For folks.
You let us know.
For later use.
Thank you for that. Thank you for being here. Thank you, sir. Okay, on to item K, ordinance 2019-03, introduction. Amending Chapter 280 zoning Article 15 PLO Planned Laboratory Office District, Section 280-63, by increasing medical office parking requirements up to eliminating certain approved uses in the PLO Planned Laboratory Office District. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Okay. Mr. Booker.
Thank you. This amendment was always intended to address parking requirements associated with medical office use in the PLO. As many of you are aware, traffic associated with medical office use is much greater than for general office. Therefore, the parking associated with medical office should be much greater than a general office parking requirement. For a general office use, which is what the PLO had traditionally been, most of the traffic comes in at nine, about nine in the morning and leaves at five, basically two trips per day. For medical office, there are eight or more visitors per hour for every office, thereby having a much greater parking requirement for medical office. And I think everybody knows when they go to the doctor, finding a parking space is an issue. You see, because there's so many people per hour that come to the medical office and therefore higher traffic, it should have a higher, it should have a higher parking requirement. Currently, the PLO does not differentiate in parking requirement between general office and medical office. And medical office was approved in 2017 as part of the PLO zoning amendment. The ITE trip generation data received in 2017 shows that medical office use is roughly three and a half times more traffic-intensive than general office. More traffic, again, means greater parking requirement. My proposed amendment has always been related to this parking requirement and its increase. So follow me here. The concept that I've always used since November, when I raised this, was the concept of the larger the parking requirement, the smaller the use on the site. And at one point, the parking requirement for a given use, in this case, medical office, would become so great that the parking requirement would squeeze the use associated with it off of the site altogether. So, for example, if you had 1,000 parking space per square foot of medical office, that parking requirement would be so great that it would eliminate the medical office use altogether for the given site. That was my proposal, to have so much parking that medical office was excluded from the site. And again, the reason for that is the medical office is so much more traffic-intensive than general office. My request of this board is to approve the elimination of the medical office use altogether so as to minimize any further traffic increases and exacerbate an already horrendous condition that we have on King of Pressure Road with traffic. And I would remind everyone about the presentation we had several weeks ago with the bridge of King of Pressure Road that's been hit over 100 times in the last eight years due to the amount of traffic that we have on King of Pressure Road. At least 15,000 trips per day in 2015. I guess it's higher than that today, 17,000 trips per day or more. This one Penn site alone will add another 7,000 trips per day on King of Pressure Road when fully developed. Therefore, this request of this board is to limit any further degradation of traffic, quality of life, and increase in safety hazards by eliminating the medical use altogether. So my concept was to have such a great parking requirement for medical use that we would have no medical use whatsoever. However, in contrast, not everyone agrees with me that that is the way to go. For expedience and ease, I wanted to, rather than going through multiple different parking iterations, I wanted to just eliminate the use and therefore eliminate the traffic associated with it and thereby limit the growth in future traffic. However, the concept of the increased parking requirement has always been recommended by others, although not to that extent. So I produced in this packet an excerpt from a 2017 letter to the Board of Commissioners from the Planning Commission, from the Radnor Planning Commission. The Radnor Planning Commission recommended one parking space per 150 square foot of medical office use at, in 2017, which is roughly twice the parking requirement for a general office per our existing code. General office parking, it's one requirement for under 50,000, then over 50,000. But in general, they recommended that we significantly increase the parking requirement for medical office, although not as high as what I had recommended, such that we squeezed out the use altogether. They recommended one space per 150 square feet of medical office parking. Again, I believe that's too low because the traffic associated with medical office is about three and a half times. So the parking should be at least three and a half times. But again, my preference would be to squeeze out the use altogether and to avoid any further problem with this. As everyone knows, Penn has already been granted medical office use on 145 King of Pressure Road with no additional parking requirement whatsoever. So they're building plenty of parking, but the existing building is not, is not, the existing parking for medical office is not addressed in the PLO whatsoever. And the Planning Commission had recommended that it be addressed in 2017. That comment, along with several others by the Planning Commissions at the county as well as the township, were not implemented when we implemented the PLO because there was the rush to approve it before the board changed. However, we should make this change now. We shouldn't let another development go in without addressing this medical office increased parking requirement that was recommended since 2017. The Planning Commission always contemplated this additional parking requirement for medical office, and again, it was ignored at the time due to the last-minute way it was approved. This must be addressed now. My recommendation to this board is that we eliminate medical office use in the PLO for any further development. However, the Planning Commission has recommended one space per 150 square feet of medical office. My request is the board to choose my alternative, but that if they choose the Planning Commission's recommendation on the issue, that would be some improvement or perhaps some greater requirement than the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So I would ask either that we approve my amendment for introduction, which is elimination of the medical office, or we request the solicitor to prepare, or direct the solicitor to prepare an ordinance for introduction that would reflect the parking requirement for increased parking for medical office that this board would choose to implement. And I request that this board take this issue up and increase the medical, increase the parking for the medical office in the PLO because it is currently not addressed and parking is just the same for general versus medical, which is inappropriate, given the additional traffic from medical office. Are there any questions?
So I think what we have before us is we would need to vote on the ordinance that's currently before us. And then if there's another option, we can discuss that. So does anyone have any comment to the current motion on the floor for ordinance 2019-03?
What's the ordinance? Because I think Rich, I think Rich, he was like, two or three different options.
There was ordinance there. It just eliminates, it says in the uses under the PLO, it strikes through medical office. That was the change.
Medical, dental, and sales.
And sales, yeah.
So it would strike those uses out of the PLO altogether, which practically would make some of the existing medical offices non-conforming, some of the existing sales offices non-conforming. And I understand Rich's theory is that eliminating medical sales eliminates parking or traffic problems. But, so that's, that's what was in front of you when this started, was that, the second part of it is, I think as Lisa said, is a separate motion. But that ordinance would just strike the uses. Doesn't say anything about parking, would just strike the uses.
Again, it doesn't say anything about parking, but the intent was that parking concept. That's always what the intent was. The sales was not an important element of it. The medical, medical office was the main issue, but the sales also presumably had greater traffic as well. My view is that the PLO, the old PLO, never provided for medical office. It never stated specifically medical office. And my understanding is that medical office was only permitted in the PLO prior to the PLO zoning amendment due to agreement, a settlement with the township and the, and Penn at that point. That there was never medical office allowed at the PLO prior to the zoning amendment. I don't know if the sales, if there's sales offices in there today. My understanding is it's all general office. I don't believe that there is any sales or dental.
Okay, so I think it's also important to note that when this was first brought to us, we referred it back to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission rejected the acceptance of this proposed amended ordinance, seven, nothing. So the Planning Commission completely...
That's consistent with their letter because you see what the Planning, and I provided that in November and I provided it again. The Planning Commission always believed that medical office should be one per 150 square feet. And I recognize that that's what they've always believed.
Okay, excellent. So I am, but just referring to what we have, the motion that is currently on the floor that we are, that is here for discussion, so...
Well, the motion was increasing medical office up to the elimination, which would include my ordinance, but the board can choose anywhere from mine to some lesser amount.
So we have the ordinance in front of us that has been moved and we are discussing it. And then if there is another option, we will take that up after. So is there any additional discussion on the ordinance 2019-03, the introduction?
Yeah, just for the sake of whatever, I'd move to amend ordinance number 2019-03 to correctly spell the word ordinance in the first paragraph and to use the correct form of the word "its" in the second paragraph, which does not have a possessive...
Accepted. So it must have been a troll that got my version that I emailed. I wouldn't make those mistakes myself.
Okay, so we will correct the spelling of ordinance and have the correct usage of the word "its" in the proposed, the ordinance 2019-03. Any additional comment on the motion on the floor? Any staff comment to the motion on the floor? Ms. Kaminski?
Aye. I had prepared a memo back in December regarding this very topic. And one of the things that I brought up was if the board decided to move forward with this, there were other zoning amendments that would come into issue because right now, as your PLO is written, you do allow for the ambulatory care facility, which is similar to the medical use. And then you also have a section that discusses additional maximum medical and dental office use shall be 30% of the gross floor area. So you have several other sections in here that if you were going to be moving forward on this, that would need to also be amended or you'd have a conflicting use going on within the same district.
Thank you very much for pointing that out to us. Is there any additional staff comment? Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the introduction of ordinance 2019-03 to amend Chapter 280 of the zoning in the PLO Planned Laboratory Office District, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. I believe motion fails, five to two.
No, we had Jack, Jake, Rich, and Sean all voted to approve.
No, did you vote for it? Yeah, no, Jack voted against it. All right, let's do it again. All those in favor of ordinance 2019, the introduction of ordinance 2019-03, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion fails, five to two. So is, Commissioner Booker, even though it's not here on the agenda, do you want to propose...
Well, I had discussions with several members of planning and I support their recommendation and would ask that this board direct the solicitor to prepare modifications to zoning, specifying the parking requirement that planning had recommended to us.
So my question on that is, and I would be fine with that as well, but does that, does that, it's medical office across the township, not just in the PLO?
Well, it turns out it's a problem everywhere.
Yes, that's what, that was, has always been my understanding, so...
I mean, I have a lot of medical offices in my ward.
So I would support that.
Well, let's increase it to more than double the, we should make it triple the standard parking so that...
That's not my motion.
No, the motion is to accept what the Planning Commission recommends.
Friendly amendment to that. Increase it for more, to make it greater.
There's really nothing to vote on here. I think that Commissioner Nagel was just suggesting that, or seeking consensus to direct our solicitor to develop an ordinance, to amend our ordinance.
To draft an ordinance.
To draft an ordinance, thank you.
That incorporates the Planning Commission's recommendation from 2017. And that recommendation, Kevin's, Kevin's not here, but that was made after a fair amount of study. Amy was involved, Kevin was involved. We didn't just pull a number out of a hat. Well, I didn't pull the number out of a hat at all, but Kevin and Amy came up with this standard, looking at other ordinances for medical office parking. So it wasn't just pick a number and double it or triple it. It was looked at comprehensively, and that was about two years ago.
Do you mind going back to the Planning Commission and asking if they've changed? Because my discussions from last year is they, they think maybe more parking is needed from their original suggestion.
Well, what I, I mean, what I would do is let's... Well, what I, I mean, what I would do is let's, I mean, I'm going to draft, I'm going to draft an amendment. It's got to go to them anyway. So that amendment, when I draft it, will go to the Planning Commission first, county and the township, before it comes back to you. So both the township and the county will have a look at it. If the township Planning Commission wants to increase the square footage requirements, they'll do that, and then it'll come back to the board.
Do we have consensus to go in this direction?
Well, it's a motion to direct, it's a motion to direct an ordinance be prepared specifying Planning Commission's recommendation for increasing in medical office parking requirements.
Okay, well, to that motion, can I get, can I get an approval on that motion? Or, I'm sorry, thank you. Is there any other Commissioner comment to the motion that is currently on the floor to direct the solicitor to prepare an amendment to the ordinance, parking ordinance? Any staff comment? Amy? Good? Any public comment? All right, all those in favor of directing our solicitor to prepare an ordinance amending the parking, medical parking here in, I guess, to Section 280, 103 of the zoning ordinance, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Look, and we did that, and we barely fought about it. That's amazing. All right. On to...
I'm gonna live to fight another day.
Okay, we will count on that. All right. L, motion to authorize the township solicitor to prepare legislation for an annual maintenance fee for Verizon and Comcast cable lines that are located above ground. Mr. Zinkowski?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask the board to authorize the solicitor to prepare a draft ordinance that would require Verizon and Comcast to maintain their wires. This is something that I know commissioners have brought up previously. I know that I get emails at least probably once a week from commissioners about how poor the maintenance of the Verizon and Comcast lines are, hanging down at, at street level. They look awful. I know we had some concerns in regards to maintenance of their wires, actually trees and other things in there, and they've came out, flat out, and said that we don't maintain trees in the wires or anything like that, which has fallen back to the township. I believe this is something that, what I think wake up a lot of these companies here to know that they need to take care of their responsibilities of these wires. We have situations where there are kids that can actually swing on these wires because they're low enough. Near bus stops, we've had this situation. We have utility poles, that last one off removes the bottom of the pole. If you drive around the township, you can see a lot of these utility poles that have never been taken out of the ground. That is Comcast and Verizon's responsibility to pull those out, and you can see how well they've done with that just by riding throughout the township. We also have one on Conestoga Road near Keith Martin Electric, where actually the utility actually has cut the pole off, and it's probably maybe 14 to 24 inches long, and it's just hanging there suspended, waiting for someone to actually remove that, which again is another hazard. So I'd ask the board if they, John, would give the authorization for the solicitor to prepare that draft and then bring it back to the board that you can actually begin the discussion of this.
Any Commissioner comment on this?
Bob, I fully support this, but the only question I have for John is how's this comport with the public utilities laws?
Well, there's, there's that. There is the, you have franchise agreements with these two entities that have some maintenance responsibilities. They're not very clearly defined, and there really isn't any remedy. I think the township, Bob and I have just spoken about this briefly. There are nuisance types of ordinances that deal with this type of situation that I've seen. You don't have a nuisance ordinance in this township. I was a little surprised. Most municipalities have, it covers up a wide, you know, area of conduct. We use property maintenance codes for a lot of the issues. But I think that's where you would have to go. You would have to define it. I don't know how large of a problem this is. I don't know whether this is, you know, 100 poles or 500 poles. I know it's a problem in every municipality. There's a gentleman in Montgomery County that goes township to township with photographs of hanging wires in Norris Town and Ridge Pike, and so it's, and the utilities aren't all that responsive. So I recognize the problem. It's just how do we implement it? But I would look at this as a nuisance type of an ordinance that will work on putting something together, bringing it back to the board.
Thanks. Fire company ever snag wires pulling on the people's properties? I mean, on Brunmore Avenue, there's a access that goes up to one of the old mansions on the hill, that those wires, if you guys can get through there, I'd be really amazed. And there's five houses up there.
I can't think of a time recently where we've actually struck wires coming through, but we do deal with other vehicles hitting them. We get calls that, you know, people call it in as a PICO line down, and it's a utility line. You know, it can add to nuisance calls for us, but there is still a risk. Some of these lines, depending on what they are, can still hold a charge, telephone lines especially. So if they're down, you know, it's, it's a, it's a hazard. But to answer your question, I can't think of a time recently where we've hit any with our own vehicles.
Maybe if I could just add to this. I know several of the commissioners have had issues with power line restoration, where PICO has come out and cleared the site, and we have waited days for a response to be able to open up roads. I know Commissioner Booker, in your ward, we had probably for a week, and it was actually Comcast and Verizon lines wrapped around trees, waiting for them to come out. So I mean, this, this is an ongoing issue. I think what John talks about, we can actually set the standard here for the Commonwealth of how these are addressed, because every week, these issues come up, and a perfect example right now, if you look at eastbound Lancaster Avenue, the Blue Route, on the north side, there are wires that are hanging there that we have notified all three utilities at, which, just before you get to the bridge, go under the bridge heading eastbound towards Villanova Center, that are in awful condition, awful shape, and those continue to sit there. And I know there are several of them throughout the township, just a few that we know are at ground level, but there are so many that are wrapped up in trees and bushes. And I know there was one in front of the township building that one of our officers actually ended up cutting down because at the bus stop, we know the kids would have been swinging on those. And then you don't know if those hit a power line or what would engage those.
So I was picking up my son at, from swim practice at the high school, and as I was leaving on, I think it's King of Pressure Road by the gym, and I guess we don't have a policeman or Radnor police, but maybe you can help us out, Chief. I looked at that light when I was, right by Estia, there's a traffic light by the TD Bank, and that light was like three quarters obstructed by wires. So I don't know, is there anything on the books of, you know, an obstruction amount on, you know, there's just, there's so many wires where it's blocking the traffic lights, where most, depending on your angle and what car and how you're looking, you know, it is to an extent definitely a traffic issue. I don't know if, I know it's not fire, I don't know if you could weigh in on a...
Sean, we'll, we'll have police out there shortly to go and take a look at that.
Okay. Just a second.
Bob, I don't think, I don't think people need to hear me talk about my views on the wires. I've spent probably the last 16 months talking about them and numerous emails to you and staff. So I support anything that we can do to move this process forward. In the meantime, you know, I'd like to have residents be able to voice their opinion and be able to be part of this, so they don't have to go through a commissioner. Laura Marion uses something called Report It, and they use it for potholes, but I think this might be a case where they could also, it's, we do have it here?
We have, not, not by that name, but you can put, identify things on the webpage.
Okay, so this is on a handheld device. You just take a picture and you send it to the township, and then that way the township's notified, and they go out and send, and they go out and look at it, and then the township's responsible to getting a response back to the, the residents. I think that would be something we should look into, so the residents know that these are being addressed.
Okay, so I just want to ask a quick question, I'm sorry. John, so you said we don't have a nuisance ordinance?
No.
So would this be something that would be wrapped into, like, should we develop a nuisance ordinance, and would this be something wrapped into that?
Well, I want to talk to Bob and Kevin. I mean, a lot of traditional nuisance issues deal with noise. You have a noise ordinance. Property maintenance, you know, people having car parts in their front yard and things like, things like that. You have a property maintenance code, and most of those are addressed. There's other things, though, and I've seen this particular situation, power lines and wires hanging certain height above the street as considered public nuisances. So anything that's a health, safety, and welfare issue that's not covered under some other code would typically go in a nuisance ordinance. You also have a right-of-way ordinance, which deals with telecommunications facilities. So I want to look at both of those together and see, you know, how we do what I think the board's intent here is, is to do, is to get some attention, get some action, and if they're not going to act on it, then we have to have the ability to find them, and then how to go about doing that. I, I wouldn't call it a maintenance fee. We, I don't think we can sort of appoint ourselves as the maintenance department and then charge. We have to give notice, an opportunity to fix it, which past experience is they're not going to do, and then we can find. So, but it is sort of a nuisance. It falls under a public nuisance type of a situation. That maybe can go in the right-of-way ordinance, maybe not. But I think the board, at least tonight, should just authorize the staff, myself, to put up a draft together, bring it back to you, or circulate it to the board, and then look at introduction sometime, sometime in the next 30 days.
John, if you're saying that this is a nuisance ordinance, and I hear Bob saying that kids are swinging, could be swinging from this, it's not a nuisance, it's a safety issue, and it should be treated differently in my mind.
It's the same thing.
Well, well, you're saying that they're going to have time to fix it. I mean, if it's a safety issue and their kid's involved, they shouldn't have time. I mean, it's, A, it shouldn't be done that way to begin with, and B, it's not like you're going to sit around and pontificate, well, this, that, whatever. You know, it should be, it should be, you know, not we're going to write them or whomever. It's, that's it, that's...
And just to add, I understand John's perspective where he's looking at, but also too, is look how much staff time it is just to follow these things, commissioners' time, but also the fire department ends up sitting on wires that are down too. Who reimburses them for their time? So there are so many multifaceted aspects to this, is, I know where John's coming from on this, but also too, is how, how do all these different entities get reimbursed for that time?
So showing the, the hanging wire with sparks coming from it, we're not going to wait and give notice. I mean, there's always going to be, if it's an immediate health, safety, and welfare issue, we, we correct it. But probably 90% of them are not going to fall into that category.
Here's the thing, you know, it's never an electrical wire, it's always a cable wire, and then one time it is going to be an electrical wire, and you're going to have some catastrophic results because of that. So people are so used to, oh, yeah, don't worry, it's a cable wire, it's a telephone wire. You know, I don't think, I think the more that you sit on it, the more you get used to it, and again, you're going to have some catastrophic results because people just become immune to it. It's just, so I, I, and I think that when you phrase it as nuisance, I think that sends a wrong message as well.
What is it called? Do you have an attractive nuisance where children can, are attracted to these things to, and they could get hurt? You have a pool without, without a fence, isn't that an attractive nuisance? Isn't that what that term is, term of art? I don't know if it's Pennsylvania or common law.
I think people have used that to describe certain types of things, unfenced pools, refrigerators that are abandoned, but...
Low-hanging wires you can swing on?
Correct. In this state, you have private nuisances, you have public nuisances. Public nuisances are considered things that are a danger to health, safety, and welfare of the community, and the township can legislate in that area.
Well, and it seems like if you do call and say that, so Luke had the picture from, what was that, yesterday? The wires that were in the bushes, rolled up in the bushes? Well, so I'm looking, that was already taken care of, right? So you called and they came out and they, so I would think, I'd like to think if there's something that is, you know, a, a potential danger in the immediate, they're going to come and fix it. You're talking about like up on Goshen Road where there's just stuff hanging down from, you know, multiple times that trees have ripped the wires down, and they come and they restring new ones, and then they just leave all the stuff hanging there. That's, you know, it's, it's unattractive. It is a potential hazard, but, you know, people have complained all the time along Sprawl Road. There's like two poles right next to each other. They moved the wires, but then they never moved the pole, and people are, you know, let's remove the pole. So things like that. I mean, I guess I also am wondering, you know, if we could put this together, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'll support this, but, and we'll say we'll find them. I mean, what, what, what's the process? I mean, would they, we can say, okay, now you're fined, or for whatever, after we go through it?
Well, we can, we can issue a fine that they have to pay with, we can issue a fine that they have to pay within a certain period of time. If they don't pay it, then we have to go to District Justice Court and file a citation.
Listen, just to your point about some of these wires, that they have taken a long time for, I know Sean had one on Conestoga Road, that it took three months, I believe, to actually get them constant calling to say, you've got to get this wire up off the ground. That was wrapped around the ground, and you have people that walk in that area, students that walk in that area, and it took at least that long for them to come up with their, well, there's no hazard. Well, how do you know there's no hazard that sits there and how it's grounding itself?
So you'd want this also have a component of, we've let you know this, and you haven't come out and responded quickly enough, you're going to get fined.
Right. I mean, unless it's an immediate, obvious safety hazard, there's got to be an element of giving them notice and an opportunity to fix it. Doesn't have to be 30 days, it doesn't have to be 10 days, it could be three days, but, you know, they likely in a lot of cases won't do that.
I was going to say, is this going to compel them to do it? And again, I'm in favor of this, but I'm just, so if they don't do it, and they just like, oh, Radnor, you're being Radnor, or whatever, and then we're taking them to District Court, and then, I mean...
Correct.
But I think some of these issues, well, I think some of these issues like we had today, they're trying to make the argument that because they, resident changes service from Comcast maybe to Verizon, where they're just going to let these old lines hang up there. And they're saying that because they're disconnected, it's not the issue, so just let that old line hang up there. We know how wind goes and everything else. Again, and just look at the sightliness of it, just right up and down the roads of, again, the vision of this, and there's no intention to remove those wires from either company.
John, so getting back to Lisa's point, does it set a bad precedent if we do try to find these providers, and our ordinance or whatever we decide to pass has no teeth, and we fail, and then it's just going to make things worse because it just basically allows them to do that, and then, you know, you're going to just see, where I would think that it gets even worse, knowing that they don't even have to, that, they don't even have to even try to make it better because it holds no weight.
Well, you're, you're assuming that the legislation is not, is not going to be effective. I mean, you can legislate in this area. Whether some court decides that it's not effective is going to be a decision, that's with any piece of legislation.
Are we the only township that is looking at this, or has this been, what's... Are we the only township that is looking at this or has this been, what's been the track record and the history of other? Because this is not, this is not a Radnor issue, this is a Comcast and Verizon issue. So what is the track record on other townships and municipalities and entities that have been dealing with this?
I think most municipalities are trying to talk to Comcast's, Verizon's, community relations person, trying to work that route. Don't know how successful it is. I don't know of another ordinance from anybody that we represent that has enacted something like this. I am aware of ordinances in other parts of the state that define this as a nuisance, a health, safety type of an issue. And I think that that's, that's something that you can legislate in. The other part of this is maybe the township ought to be sending some complaints to the PUC regarding this because that's really the entity that regulates Verizon and Comcast.
Will they do anything about that?
Not sure what their, their enforcement is, Luke. You know, I'm not, not sure that they're, they're going to be all, you know, on, on top of that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, that's the appropriate entity.
Yeah.
I just don't know if this is something they're going to spend time on.
Well, I've actually done the paperwork and filed complaints with them about it. And basically, they come back and say they don't worry about that area.
Is that right, PUC?
Yeah. Now, I have a good friend who was a former PUC commissioner, I'm going to reach out to him on this.
One thing I will say is with the board action, and I want to say, John, maybe like five, six years ago, there were issues with PICO and PICO Power and that, and I have to say that PICO has come out and restrung a lot of new wire, especially they've installed a new wire that supposedly it can take a hit, impact from a tree. They did an awful lot of, of repair there. Response has been very, very good to the township, so our hope is that these other two will follow the same suit that PICO, I think, has really made a big difference.
Has PICO done anything with that 500 Houston Road property for that wire that was in the trees to put that underground?
I'll have to find out from Steve on that. We'll find out for you on that one.
I don't, I don't think they have. They planned to do it in February. I don't think they've got to it yet.
Okay. And then I know that they're going to be putting that cabling underground by the bridge, which is again, a huge, a huge move by them.
Let's add pen dot potholes to that nuisance ordinance. All right, so I will entertain a motion to authorize the township solicitor to prepare legislation for an annual maintenance fee for Verizon and Comcast cable lines that are located above ground. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All right, have we exhausted this as the commissioners?
I think we have.
Is there any additional comment from staff? Is there any public comment? Take your time. You have.
Sarah, Pulling, Garrett Avenue, I really would appreciate something been done on this. Garrett Avenue has been overloaded in the past with students, and the issue is Joe comes in and rents the house, and when he leaves in May Comcast or Verizon cuts the line. Sam comes and rents it in August and they put new lines in. So we look like I spent a lot of time in Haiti. It looks worse than the streets in Haiti. It's really awful. It's aesthetically, it's running down the neighborhood, which does affect the real estate values, and something really has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other public comment? All right, all those in favor of the motion to authorize the township solicitor to prepare legislation for annual maintenance fee for Verizon and Comcast cable lines that are located above ground, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing.
Madam President, if I may, just want to thank the board for taking that action. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it forward, Mr. Zinkowski. All right, anything? We've nothing from Finance and Audit, nothing from Parks and Rec. Library, I'm just going to remind everyone, I know some people attended Focus Group this morning, and there was a town hall this evening for the library around their strategic planning. So I'm just also going to, if everyone could go to the library website and fill out their survey, they're trying to get 1,000 people to fill out the survey, which is part of their strategic planning. There's also, I left some copies back on the back table. If people want to fill them out and leave them, I will make sure they get to the library. But they are undertaking this robust strategic planning initiative, and we're all taxpayers, we all contribute to the library, so it would be great if everyone could make their voices heard through the survey because they're asking to hear from us. Public Health?
No.
New Business? Discussion on revising and updating the comprehensive plan, Commissioner Booker.
Yes, the comprehensive plan for Radnor was basically produced in the year 2000. It deals with all aspects of land use and development within the township. There was been an update in 2015, but really it has not been looked at extensively for nearly 20 years. And you can see the vast amount of change in Radnor Township over the last 20 years. Recent projects like, you know, the Penn Hospital and the, the Wawa, there's all kinds of different things on Lancaster Avenue and all of our business districts. So I would propose that we, we have a new comprehensive land use plan prepared, reviewed, and updated, and that we have a moratorium on development until that comprehensive land use plan has been reviewed and revised so that we, we have a document that's actually helpful to us moving forward with the township and its development.
Is that a budgeted item?
I don't know if it's a budgeted item or not, but we, budgets, you know, there's always, there's always ways around things, so I don't, I don't know that would cost that much. I think the first thing is developing, you know, putting people together to the township people who would volunteer to work on it and then finding out what it would cost, so we can, we can work it in with the capital if we need to. But it's definitely needed. It's, it's something that this board has no longer used as a resource, and that comprehensive plan really needs to be updated. And a review of our development and the path that Radnor is going to be taking over the next 20 years really needs to be laid out because right now, there's, there's no, there's no relevance of that document, so I propose we make that relevant.
We, we budgeted this and passed this. Remember, we're doing a joint one with Haverford.
We did, and that one has fallen apart, doing that with Haverford.
It has?
We did, yes, we did propose it in the 2019 budget and it was not approved within there. The estimate is between 100 and 150,000 to do a comprehensive plan update, so that would be something the board would have to budget for. But I agree, this is something that definitely needs to be done and updated because there are some gaps and holes in there, and I agree, this, this should be something that we should, we should budget, we should move forward with.
Well, it sounds like it's, it sounds like it's part of our discussion, ongoing discussions around the, around our township finances that we have at our meeting. We have one next week, so we should add that to the list. I guess...
And along with that was we would have a moratorium on new, new projects until we put that, put that into place. That's an important element of it because we want to be consistent with that.
I don't see putting a moratorium on anything until we have, have money to actually do a plan. All right, discussion regarding plastic bag ordinance requested by myself and Commissioner Clark. So we've had, heard from residents, people who are interested in the township looking at the, something similar to what Narberth did around the plastic bag ordinance. And it was our thought, I think, to bring this up and perhaps take that ordinance, refer it to the Environmental Advisory Committee, and I think also see how they might work with the Wayne Business Association. I also heard, I think I've heard that the WBA might be already looking at some of these things. I think we heard from our one resident this evening about that. So I guess I was just looking for consensus from the board, or would you say, Luke?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything you said, so, yeah, I'd like consensus that we send it to the EAC and get some sort of, I guess we would direct the solicitor, the township manager, to ask for an opinion from the Wayne Business Association.
So we could, we could take, I guess, the, the ordinance that's been prepared by the Narberth recently adopted, send it to our EAC and have them look at it. It may or may not work for us, there may be things that, you know, we want to change or, but have them have, take a comprehensive look at it, work with the community on it as well as, I think, the WBA.
There are other business districts other than Wayne, though.
Oh, absolutely. Garrett Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Is this, is this plastic bags or is it all plastic? We heard single-use plastic, whatever that means. What is, what is, it said plastic bags only?
I think it's single, so it can be single-use, but I think their ordinance is it's plastic bags and straws, but like I think we've heard is a lot of businesses here are already working on that.
So is it they banned or they have to get charged? What's, what's, before we say we want to do what Narberth says, let's just...
No, no one's saying we want to do what Narberth does.
You did, you said you wanted to have the EAC look at the Narberth ordinance.
And see how that might work for us.
Sure, so can you let everyone know what the Narberth ordinance is?
There's a draft Philadelphia one too.
But we, you said Narberth, so is it a, is it a fee or what is it?
So they do have a fee, and Sarah, if you want to come up and speak, because I know you know this...
Before we take...
Sean!
No, but, no.
Just a moment. You're not letting me finish any sentence.
But before we take...
Sean, I know what's in the ordinance.
I, I understand that, but let me, let me finish, please.
No, I was speaking and you, so you asked a question, then you don't let me finish.
I am, but you're bringing up Sarah and I didn't know that we had public comment yet. This is the public comment.
And I'd like to raise point of order.
I am...
So last meeting when we had a big discussion on, on Crown Castle and Microcell's, and we didn't have a vote, and we wanted neighbors to come up, I actually had to go through a vote to have residents come up and talk.
No, we didn't. The neighbors came up and spoke.
After a huge discussion.
No, it wasn't a huge discussion. We said come up and speak.
No, no, that's not how it happened. So this is precedent now that we're setting here.
And I think if we go back and look at that meeting, that we said, yes, people, please come up and speak, and they did.
We should look, because I think Sean raised the issue that residents were coming to speak when we weren't having a vote.
Well, he's raising an issue now, and I'm, I think at that time I overruled his issue and his concern, and I asked the residents to come up and speak, and that's what I'm doing now. So, well, you can go back and look at the meeting if you'd like. So Sean, to your question, there is an ordinance that was prepared by Narberth. As Luke has mentioned, there's also one, I think, that's coming into Philly.
To Lisa's draft.
Yeah, we are just asking for our EAC to take a look at those. I'm not saying, the Narberth one does, I think they do charge people if they want a bag, if they want to use a plastic bag. That may not work for us. We're asking them to talk to residents, to talk to the Business Association. We're not saying that it's going to be exactly like Narberth. I don't know what it's going to be, we're just asking them to take a look.
You're, I guess my question or my concern is you're saying, take a look at something, but I don't even necessarily know what that is, and that's where I'm a little bit, you know, that's, that's, that's all my, that's just my big question. You're saying, I want you to look at something and you specifically referenced Narberth, but then you're saying, I don't necessarily know where, where it is. So for me to even have the conversation, we should know exactly what it is. I know Sarah will speak to it, I get that, but if we are pushing, you know, if we're pushing this forward, we should know specifically what we're, what we're trying to enact.
Well, how about if we just ask our EAC to look into the single-use plastics and various ordinances we can provide them, they already know, in fact, and get, they could hold public hearings and we can get some feedback from the, the community, and then if we feel it's important enough, then we can direct John to write some ordinances for us.
I think that sounds like an excellent option. Thank you, Commissioner Nagel. Does that satisfy your concern?
No, it doesn't.
For clarity, Sean, the Narberth ordinance discourages the use of single-plastic bags. If you go into Mary's Hardware Store and you want a plastic bag, you pay Mary's Hardware Store, not the Borough of Narberth, 50 cents for a bag. It's as simple as that, and Mary's Hardware gets to keep the 50 cents. The impetus is that by the time Joe Schlump has spent 50 cents so many times because he doesn't care to bring a bag, you're going to change his behavior. It's all about changing people's behavior.
Okay, I wrote something.
All right, you want, let me make my comments before you read that, okay? Because that's, I can't wait to hear that, so I want to see what that...
Do you mean that serious?
I do, I do mean that seriously. The, the concern I have with this plastic ban is the issue with single-use plastic, it's, it's in the ocean, it is a problem. The biggest contributor to the ocean problem is the rivers, their flow into it, and they're from Africa and India. It's the Ganges and the Nile that produce the most plastic that gets into the ocean that's contaminated the ocean. In Radnor, I think Steve will, he's not here, but in Radnor, our trash we send to the incinerator. We're not, we're not, none of our plastic bags are going into the ocean. They're getting, they get burned up to make trash, trash to steam. The, the, the concept of forcing people to pay 50 cents per bag is not going to, to make them pay the 50 cents and have the store owner keep it, it's going to have them shop from home and, and, you know, have the, have the groceries delivered. And it's not just the Wayne Business Association, it's places like the Giant and others that use plastic bags quite a bit. And while, while most restaurants now, you, they have, the straws are not usually plastic, you know, some of them are cornstarch or whatever they are, or paper, none of them work as well as plastic, by the way, but, be that as it may, the issue we're trying to address is a national, worldwide issue. Again, Radnor's contribution to it is minimal or nonexistent, and why would we want to inconvenience our constituents or cost them money for something like this? I don't, I don't see the need for it and would not, would not even pursue it.
I'll be brief with my remarks, Madam, Madam Chairman.
I'm dying to hear that.
Rich was. So, look, I do certainly applaud any effort to help the environment, and I do believe that how we treat the earth is very important as we have to pass it down from generation to generation. And I do actually, no, and I like the spirit of this, but I believe in some ways it goes way too far, and in some ways, it just doesn't go far enough. So when we say, does this apply to bags? How about the produce bag that in the in-store that you put your broccoli in or your, not potatoes, but your apples in? I mean, that's a plastic bag. Most plastic goods are wrapped, or most packaged goods are wrapped in plastic, and Ziploc bags too are also single-use, although I do my best to reuse them when possible. And no, that's true. And then I know the township, if you go to Hartford Park and even at Emblinton, there's a, yep, there's single-use animal waste bags. So again, I think that it's great that you want to limit in some areas, but not in others, and to me, it's kind of a little bit like self-deprivation. And I do truly believe that this is a knee-jerk reaction and you're trying to keep up with the Joneses as a rule of governing, and I do believe that to a certain extent, and I don't want to sound like Rich, but this is kind of big government.
Yes, you do.
No, I don't.
Big, big government?
Let me, stop, it's big government overstepping its bounds, and I do believe that it is kind of a slippery slope here.
Here, here.
Rich, stop. So, and you all know that I am a, I'm a small business owner and I do use those bags, and trust me, I, like anyone, I hate buying anything that I don't get paid for. So the idea of getting money, I guess you could say, is good, but I look at this as it's another tax. It's similar to Philadelphia's regressive excise tax on... It's similar to Philadelphia's regressive excise tax on soda. Yes, I do. I believe that. And it's bad for the consumer, and it's also bad for the business that, like me, would have to, I would have to account for charging 10 cents a bag in my itemized yearly, and I have enough problems doing, doing all my accounting as well. So, and I'm not in the business of selling bags for 10 cents, or 25 cents, or 50 cents. It's kind of like, so what's going to wind up happening? I'm not going to charge them. It's kind of like a credit card fee, where small businesses just absorb it, unless you're in New Jersey and you get a difference between cash and credit for gasoline. I think that this will make small businesses less profitable and less viable as well. And as you know, we've had an issue with our mercantile and business privilege taxes, and they've fallen significantly. So I believe that most stores, when you go in there, if you have to think about buying a bag, it cuts down on impulse buying. And the idea of having to come with bags will definitely come into play. But the, really, the main, the main reason that I think this is bad is, when I leave the house, I mean, it's real easy for me to put plastic, reusable bags in my SUV or my car whenever I go to Giant or, or wherever and take them out. But to, this really, really hurts the, what I believe, the poorest of the poor residents, where they don't necessarily, they may not have a car. They may not know that they have to buy something. And then they're going to have to turn around and buy these bags, and they can't afford it. Again, it is very similar to the soda tax. The people that can afford car, that have, that can afford a car and can afford to go over the city line to buy soda, you know, they can, they're going to do obviously much better than the person that doesn't have the means for that. And they have to go to the corner store where all they have are sugary sodas. So really, I, I mean, I have some, some major, no, I have some major issues with this as a whole. I think the idea is good. I think the spirit is good. I'm all for the environment. But again, I think in some areas, as I said, it goes way too far, and you're just focusing on one plastic bag issue and not looking at as a whole. It's just, oh, if you go to the Giant, then you can't use it, but, you know, why aren't we looking at, why aren't we looking at our Ziploc bags? And why aren't we looking at all the other bags, the single-use bags that I mentioned? So I have a, while, while I want to support it, I have a very difficult time. Thanks.
Very good points that he made there. And what I would say about the, the various taxes that Sean referred to, it is a major issue, and the systems involved is incredibly complex. Everybody's, all these businesses have a very sophisticated system of every transaction, and there's reporting. This is a significant expense and difficulty for businesses to implement these types of charges. It's, you think, oh, they can just do it. Trust me, there's a lot of programming, accounting, checks, and it really is a major issue. It's a significant hardship. So that's a really big point.
All right. So let's send it to the EAC and the business community. Let's see what they come back with. And if there's major pushback from the business community, and the EAC is all for it, we're going to have a decision to make, right? So let's see what they come back with.
I fully support that. I fully support that, because I really feel that all of the questions, the very insightful questions asked by Commissioner Farhi and Commissioner Booker can perhaps be answered by the EAC, which is exactly why we want to send it to the EAC.
Well, now they know what the concerns are.
And they do. So thank you for sharing that. I think it was very, very, it was very informative, so thank you.
Commissioner Nebraska.
Yes?
The EAC will not consider things such as changes to financial systems and compliance, tax compliance. That's not their purview.
You're right.
No, they're not.
Correct.
So.
That's on us.
That would be our decision.
And with feedback from the business community.
Exactly.
The business community is not going to be overly concerned about the environment. They're going to be concerned about the bottom line of valid points you raised, increased reporting requirements, increased fees. We understand that. At the end of the day, we're going to meld those together and make a decision.
All right. Would you kindly repeat your?
And maybe it gets denied. I don't know. Who knows?
Kindly repeat the motion or the consensus you're asking for, then.
So the consensus, I believe so clearly articulated by Commissioner Nagel, thank you for doing so, is to ask the EAC to look at the potential of a single-use plastic bag ordinance, to engage with the business communities from all over the township, and see if there is some sort of ordinance that can be developed that we might be able to support. I think it's the perfect thing for the EAC to look at, and I would ask that we support doing this, sending it along.
So again, the EAC would reach out to the business communities, or the board of commissioners would reach out to the business communities on this issue?
I think it's a collaborative, a collaborative effort. We would ask the EAC to engage with the business community on this issue.
We also need to look at the residents as well. I mean, some of them have.
Well, the residents would be at the EAC.
That is why we're sending it to the EAC. You know what the EAC is, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And you know that it's a public meeting.
Correct.
That the public participates in.
We appoint those people, too.
Yes, we do. We do appoint those people. So they can come to the meeting. That's why we would give it to the EAC. And they would have an opportunity to work on it over several months. It might take them a while.
By the way, this brings up another point. Every year, we do several stream cleanups around town.
So I have one scheduled for April 13th.
On Darby Creek and Sawmill.
Yes, Sawmill.
I've done several of those over the years, and I think you would be amazed at the amount of stuff that we pull out, including plastic bags and Styrofoam cups. And I don't remember ever pulling a straw out unless it was in a cup. But, and they're very, they're very rewarding, and I would encourage everyone to help out on that effort.
So we have one coming up on April 13th over at Sawmill Park.
Well, what are the college students going to use if they're, if we ban, next we ban red solo cups?
And that can be something that the EAC can address as well.
Okay. I care about our college students.
We have, we have six minutes left. I'm not voting to extend this meeting, so let's move this along. I will, I'll move to direct the Environmental Advisory Council to analyze the issue of banning single-use plastic bags in conjunction and with feedback from the business community. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right. We've had discussion.
Have discussion. Any more public comment?
All right.
All right. I will call the vote. All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Clark regarding single-use bags to the EAC, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Did the motion pass five, six to one?
Six to one.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right. So the last thing is this update on the recap of the county line road.
Again, I would, it's not that I don't want the EAC. I would say we should direct this, not the EAC. That's not their purview to do business issues. So that's, that was a misplaced direction, I think.
We understand your concerns. Thank you.
All right. What's next?
Okay. Update recap of the county line road assessment.
Real quick, I know John Nagel was there. I was there. Amy did a great presentation when it came to the county line road corridor. And I'm just curious what the next steps are. We're waiting on a final plan, and I know that this is grant-eligible. And what are those steps with the grants, and how do we work with Laura Marion to, and the state to get some of those grants?
In four minutes or less.
Yep. In four minutes or less. And save, save a minute for public comment.
Oh, okay. So we've been working on the, the project. We did a draft report. We did an initial presentation in August, a follow-up in January. We took a lot of comments coming back. We're still in the process right now of looking at moving to a three-lane alignment down county line road. Once we're done, we will identify which improvements we think are short-term ones, things that are easy pickings, inexpensive improvements. The other ones that are more costly, we'll identify potential grants for them. And the grant season will be coming up starting in June in that area. So this is intended to be done within the next month, and we'll be moving forward then.
And real quick about getting grants, you said it's helpful when there's two counties and two municipalities.
When you have two municipalities, it's very helpful going for grants. They're looked upon more favorably. So that'll be a good thing.
It? Is that it? We have Amy. Amy, thank you. Thank you for waiting till the bitter end to give that report. Thank you. All right. Any old business? New, all right, public participation. Any public comment? No public comment?